So I hope to really kind of keep things rolling along here because I don't think any of us want to be here at 10 o'clock tonight. So we'll do our very best to kind of keep things on track. First up, roll call.
Okay. Jaeger?
Yes.
Duval?
Here.
Woodward?
Here.
Calruss?
Here.
Foley?
Present.
Lambert?
Here.
Gorm?
Here.
Very good. Looking for approval or change of tonight's agenda?
Chair motion to approve as submitted.
Very good.
Lambert, second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign of vote? All right, we're moving along. David, do you want to say anything before we get started or can we just start with our first presentation?
I think we can just jump right in, Mr. Chair.
That sounds great. Let's go.
Mr. Chair, excuse me, pardon me. Do you mind if we would introduce ourselves to our guests?
Chris, would you like to start?
Sure. I am Chris Foley. I work privately as a land surveyor and joined the Brainerd Planning Commission about a year ago. Right at the end of the comprehensive plan update and I'm excited to be a part of this next process we have.
Jen Lambert, a city council liaison to the planning and zoning. And unlike Chris, I was through that comprehensive plan. So thanks. Thank you guys for being here.
I'm Matt Calruss. My work is, I'm a planner with Region Five Development Commission, so kind of a planner. And it's kind of funny because I interned when the comp plan was starting for Brainerd. And then I got hired for Region Five, who was the consulting consultant for that. So I saw the start and the end. So that was cool.
Teresa Woodward. I own a couple businesses downtown and I'm the president of the board of directors for our food cooperative, which is also relocating downtown and part of our development coalition.
Awesome. My name is Don Gorm. I'm chair of the planning commission. This is my fourth year on the planning commission. I work at the Bridge of Harmony Music Store downtown. I'm an itinerant mandolinist and troublemaker from time to time. And look forward to tonight's meeting.
Welcome. I'm Mike Duval. I'm a former natural resources worker and currently a property manager in the city of Brainerd. Welcome to our meeting tonight.
Thank you. My name is Kevin Jaeger. I'm the new person on the board, as you can tell by my fancy name tag here. But please don't hold that against me. I'm also on the park board and I'm a park board vice chair as well as on the charter commission. I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight. Super excited about this process and to be a part of it. Thank you.
Very good. First up would be WSB.
Go ahead.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, actually Ron Bray, principal and founder of WSB. Very excited to have our team here to interview. I know a lot of people get nervous about doing interviews, but I think it's a great opportunity to be face to face and you can get to know our personality and the people who will actually be working on the plan with you. So 25 years of experience myself. Can you have the next slide? Oh, we're at the end there, huh? All right. Exciting at WSB is we're currently ready, next month is our 25-year anniversary. So having started a small business from scratch in the state of Minnesota, we're very interested in making sure that this plan is open, collaborative, and presents the opportunity for Brainerd, the city of Brainerd, to grow. Because I know my roots in engineering, so I'm not actually a certified planner. But I grew up in the Hackensack area and I worked for the Department of Transportation for just about nine years here, just down the street when I was actually in the Brainerd area. So very familiar with Brainerd, so I thought it important that I stay involved as a principal. I know in the late 80s, there was a peer review of the downtown for economic development. It's been a continuous process of trying to grow to downtown. And we know especially in these challenging times that small business is very crucial to keeping this economic engine going. And the zoning plan update is very critical to the city in working in that. So 38 years of experience and very proud of WSB. We've grown from four people to over 500. We are based in Minnesota, but we do work in four states. And with that, we work for a lot of municipalities, over 75 municipalities that we're involved in fairly extensively. Many of those we serve as a city engineer, providing full service. In that process, we learned it's very important that we bring this planning in if we are going to be full service to our cities. So we have a great team here tonight. Molly, over 20 years of experience, very experienced in working on these type of plans. So we're excited to have her on the team. She'll be talking more about, a little bit about her experience and her components of the plan. Erin, over 22 years, behind me here, leading our planning group. And it's become quite a prominent group within WSB. We're excited about that. And Eric Moss brings a lot of excitement in promoting an open process and communication. And I think the key as we work with this team is you'll find that we're very collaborative and we're open. And we know it's the key that when we work in a city that we just don't bring, all right, here's city A's plan. We just don't bring that in and change the names. This needs to be a custom plan that works for you, generates that economic engine that fires you up and keeps the city growing because a city that's not growing is struggling. So it's important that this zoning-based update and plan accommodate that business growth and especially accommodate the small business and development of housing in this area. The next slide. So I think myself, very connected to the Brainerd area, sometimes called the Jack Pine Savage still nowadays, even though I've moved to the metro 30 years ago. Working, spent five years working with city staff and council on the College Drive improvement. That was very important to bring the roundabouts to the area. I know, hopefully you all like roundabouts. I know everybody doesn't like them. But a huge improvement and probably one of the largest reconstruction projects in the city that's been done. I know we're working on Memorial Park redevelopment. Our park planners there are working on that. So another whole service group within WSB. We were the lead engineer on the Highway 371 from Nisswa up to the Jenkins, that whole four lane, that $50 million reconstruction project. But I think more important, we're here tonight to focus on our planning group and their experience. And we bring a unique team, very excited to do this plan update with you. And with that economic development component, that'll be very key in accommodating and customizing this zoning update. So we're very excited for that and we're going to do a short presentation with the staff and then we'll be open for questions and comments. Thank you.
So YWSB. So I'm Molly Jess. I will be your project manager as well as a planner working on code update. So we understand that the city just went through a very big, very long, very comprehensive update to its comprehensive plan. There's momentum there already. We want to build on that momentum. We respect the time and energy that went into that process. There's a lot of good thinking, a lot of good participation, a lot of good interest. You have a new planning commission member from that process. People engage more easily on a comprehensive plan than they do a zoning ordinance. So for Brainerd, you've got the great opportunity that you've committed to investing in a zoning code update so soon after updating the comp plan. Not every community is willing to invest its resources so intensely right after a comp plan update. So what we will do is we will engage internal and external resources or stakeholders really to confirm that the comp plan's guiding principles, the first page or so of the comp plan is really the guiding principles from that plan, are the right ones for this project. So for example, do you really want to expand housing options? Might that include accessory dwelling units, missing middle housing? We will take the opportunity to leverage this recent public engagement to help us determine where the zoning ordinance is or isn't helping the city to achieve the guiding principles. We will work with internal stakeholders such as staff and steering committee to develop the right work plan for the project. That is incredibly important. We need to figure out what from the comprehensive plan will be implemented now. Is that going to include really putting together and getting adopted a future land use map for the comp plan? That, that's really a critical question that could inform a lot of the discussion around housing, around housing density, around initiatives that the city wants to undertake downtown. So the key is Brainerd is unique. And we hope that zoning can be used to achieve your land use goals. And we want to work together with you to make that happen. With that over, with that, I'll turn it over to Eric. I thought I had it.
We're better at zoning than you are.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, everybody. Eric Moss here, planning and economic development. We really see a zoning code, the intent of a zoning code is not to be a barrier to development. A zoning code should enable development and provide for a clear process to yes. Myself, Molly, Erin, we all serve as zoning administrators in our respective communities. So we have that day-to-day knowledge and practice and sometimes difficulty in actually administering zoning ordinances in our community. So we know what it's like to be staff. I want to make that clear. Also, we've kind of been there, done that. We know what it takes to achieve development. And it's not, a zoning code should not be a barrier to development. It has to yes. Example that we wanted to highlight with you all was in the city of Ramsey. Went through a comprehensive planning process, not all that disimilar from your own. Following that was a zoning code update. And a specific goal of that was to essentially usher in another zoning district specifically geared towards increasing opportunities for employment in that community. That followed a industrial park. We helped them get shovel-ready certified through the State Department of Employment and Economic Development. About 160 acres. Along with that shovel-ready certification was that new zoning ordinance. We drafted that ordinance itself, that specific district, from scratch, tailoring what the city was looking for with this new employment park, what they wanted it to be. Again, as we serve as zoning administrators, we then got to use that exact zoning ordinance and review projects. So I've included here a picture you see here from a drone, three of those buildings being constructed, or I should say fully constructed, within that new business park. That represents about 240,000 square feet of commercial industrial space. The city also this year ushered in Delta Mod Tech. They're actually currently under construction in the northwest area of this business park. 220,000 square foot facility, about 130 jobs to the community. All of that, again, new zoning district, path to yes, great project for the community, and they only expect more within that area. Now, how does that apply to Brainerd? We think that's very important, you know. Again, as Ron mentioned, it's not about, okay, ordinance option B, Brainerd, there it is. No. Custom, what do you need? Where do you need it? We understand that there's an interest in form-based zoning code as well as a traditional zoning code. So when we look at, for example, downtown Brainerd as a vibe, as a brand, what, when you have somebody walking down that street, be it a local, be it a tourist, they should know they're in downtown Brainerd. So that's where we think perhaps a form-based zoning code could fit. That much of the intent is on the form and the structure of the building and that there can be some flexibility, which that form-based code allows, within the actual use of that structure. Conversely, there's other areas of the city that might not fit so well for a form-based zoning code. And for that reason, a traditional zoning code would be probably most appropriate. But we don't know what we don't know and that's where you all come in. The engagement process comes in to make sure that, again, a tailored zoning district and zoning ordinance is created for the city of Brainerd for your update. Turn over to Erin.
Next slide.
One too far. Now we're back again. There we go. So as Eric mentioned, I know that you're interested in exploring some form-based elements to your code as well as some traditional elements. I'm here to just say that the idea with a form-based code is really to keep things simple. So fancy term, but really what we're trying to do is make the city's vision clear, make the city's vision implementable, easy to understand, and easy for staff to administer. As Eric mentioned, form-based elements could be written into a single district. For example, a downtown or maybe an historic neighborhood that has some character that you want to preserve as parcels redevelop. Some cities do form-based codes for the whole city. That's a little bit more rare. But again, the idea is that we, we focus less on the various uses that are going on on the land and more about what do the buildings look like, how do they feel, how do they relate to each other? Are we achieving the character that we want to achieve? And that's the flexibility that a form-based code gives you. It also helps to remove barriers to development. If a developer or a property owner can clearly see what the city wants, it's easy for them to give it to you. So our job as professional planners is to hear from you, interpret your comprehensive plan, see what it is you're trying to accomplish, and then give you the zoning tools in order to make that happen. And form-based elements are just one part of that. It also offers an opportunity to streamline the development process. So you basically have everything you need to know on one sheet for certain types of buildings that folks might want to build. If they meet the standards, should be a smooth approval process. And so that's one way that we can help remove those barriers. Form-based elements are, rely heavily on what the character is of the areas that we're trying to regulate. And for that, we need some public engagement. We obviously get a lot of that from the comprehensive plan, but we want to talk to folks about that as well. And I'll let Molly explain a little bit more about how we intend to do that. There's an example in your packet of a project similar to the one that Eric described to you about how a form-based code helped enable new development in a struggling area. So feel free to take a look at that later.
Thanks, Erin. Try to go to the next slide. All right. And I think I'm hovering over something. Okay, so really the last content slide that we have for you talks about effective public engagement. Public engagement can't be done the way it used to be done. Right now, it certainly isn't being done that way, right? It's actually being done better. I was talking with David before we got started about how the city is now going to be, and I think I got this right, but Brainerd and another client of mine I was talking with recently, we were talking about, okay, well, if you've gotten back to in-person public hearings, have you really kept any of the lessons learned from distance meetings? Anything that worked and you'll keep that going? Yes, that client is keeping their Zoom account. That city council is so, so penny-pinching. But they realize it's worth it to keep the Zoom account because that way people can participate from home or from the candy shop when they're getting a late chocolate, right? So we understand that there need to be a lot of different ways to reach the public and engage the public. So we foresee a task force or steering committee and the guiding principles from the comp plan as being really the touchstone for the work we do, we do. We'll have a work plan, right? And the task force or steering committee will work with us all the way through that work plan. But we will also use public engagement, whether it's informing people or reaching them, which is social media, which is flyers, which is emails, which is just a simple post on Facebook. There's engaging people on specific questions nowadays can be done effectively and in a way that people can understand a little more. Zoning is boring. Zoning is confusing, right? But when you engage them using an interactive map from a link that you've sent them and you have a very specific question, they can see their community and relate the question you have to that map and convey their response on their time, when it works for them, right? Virtual meetings. We can still use Zoom, right? We can have as many virtual meetings with as many different people. My mother-in-law uses Zoom. My mother-in-law and my eight-year-old have Zoom meetings together. That didn't happen last summer. No. My mother-in-law had here to use FaceTime. My eight-year-old knew how to use computer games and that was it. Now they Zoom together. So everybody knows how to do this now. We also will have stakeholder groups, strategic public workshops. Just know that we understand that public engagement is critical, that strategic intentional public engagement is the right way to do it. And we will work with you to figure out the best way for Brainerd. So we're at our last slide and I know that you have questions for us. We do have a couple for you, if there is time for that. And since we do have a team here, I will take your question and make sure that the best person from our team answers your question. David?
All right, thank you. David, you want to start the questions?
Awesome. Yep, so I have two questions I'm going to start off with and I'm asking all the consultants this evening. And then after that, I'm going to give it up to the, the planning commission to ask any questions that they have. The first question I have, Molly, for you and your colleagues is from your understanding of the project, what do you believe will be the most challenging task?
In my experience, so most of the work I'm doing right now is updating zoning codes. It is not just educating people on the difference between what zoning can and can't do. It's getting them to understand it and being able to work with them to translate their concern into something that we can do something about because I know we can. But the zip, what zoning can and can't do is a big challenge.
The second question I have is a little more specific to your proposal. In your proposal, you listed a, a proposed cost to the project of $82,949 with some add-ons. Is the price listed in your, in your RFP, is it a not to exceed, is it a base fee? And what issues do you generally encounter that cause change orders which result in increased fees?
That is an inclusive cost. It's inclusive of everything you see in here, you know, other than add-ons. We tried to be very clear about that. And we see the, coming up with the actual scope of work to be really working together. This is an idea based on the RFP of how we would deliver a zoning code update. In terms of, and you know what, I forgot the second part of your question.
What, what, yeah, what are common change orders that result in increased fees?
So common change orders are really a result from not having a clear and thorough work plan that would really be part of what comes out of our first phase of this project. It's, if a work plan to update the zoning code hasn't been fully vetted internally, it's probably not going to succeed, right? Ways that we work to vet work plans are having the staff and the commission or steering committee involved. You know, sometimes that work plan even goes to the city council. You know, just having a really extensive process to figure out the work that's going to be done. Another frequent reason for change orders is, you know, we get to the point of drafting language and it's some point, there's a constituency that cannot come to agreement on what that, that best language should be. And so there's back and forth and revisions. So we try to be very clear about what we know that we can do and in our experience, what it takes. And we, you know, we'll say, look, we've had a number of, you know, back and forth. It's, it is starting to eat budget here. We want, before it's fully eaten for that task, let's meet and see what we can do to resolve this. Because usually it can be resolved without a significant change.
Mr. Chair?
Very good. I'm going to open the questions up to the, the commission. Any questions? Ms. Lambert?
Of course, right. Molly, and the group, do you, looking over what we're asking, do you see that we are going to need to prioritize how we go about doing that? And if so, do you feel that there's some things that we can initiate sooner than later?
Such as before the project gets started or?
No, as we're going, as we're going through this, are you gonna, you're going to be able to prioritize and then also help to see what we can do to help ourselves with this, within this, yes? And that, I guess that's my question, big question is.
Yes, yes. So when we, first of all, there will be, there'll be several steps to even getting started. David and I, or representative from this group, and David and I would work together to really figure out the, the final scope of work. So that would be revealing. That would probably be the first revealing point of, you know, you guys could go ahead and get started with this. Or I actually suggest we move that item further up because we found that discussing that earlier results in an easier time getting adopted. So that would be sort of, sort of the first opportunity to identify areas then as we start to meet with the steering committee. Then in that work plan forming phase, right? Because you can't, we don't know yet what's fully necessary.
Okay.
And that we're going to figure that out with you. And that work plan, we have to, we have to keep on that work plan because we're excited about this project. We, you know, we didn't propose $120,000. We, we're excited about the project. We're intentional. We want to be competitive. We also know, you know, okay, we don't have a lot of fluff in here. So we need to stay on that work plan, right? And you need to stay on that work plan because it was developed very intentionally. So early on in the process, we'll have an idea of what can be done earlier or perhaps safer.
And then, and maybe, maybe David could probably answer this too. That we will be able to be updated in, either way, you're going to, we're going to have set times that, hey, this is what we're going to do, so.
Yeah, but, okay.
Yes, I would say if I could just add on a little bit, I think the, the first part of what we have proposed, which is to diagnose your zoning ordinance, basically do an audit of it with you, that's really going to help us and help you establish what's the most important, what do we need to tackle first? So that's really a key step that's going to help.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions from the commission?
Mr. Chair?
Please.
As a team, you know, well, the comp plan involved a lot of public input, both online and focus groups and such. And I'm wondering how you would recognize and manage perhaps public input fatigue in getting us through this very open process. Do you have some thoughts on that?
Do you want to take that one?
Sure. Yeah, really good question. And we're very cognizant of the fact that our public engagement has to be, as Molly said, intentional, different than the same questions that you asked during the comp plan process. And so what we've found is that although it's difficult to get people interested and engaged in zoning, that if we are place-based, like if we spend some time walking around a neighborhood, walking around downtown, talking to people about, you know, what works and what doesn't, that helps us to hear what we need to hear in order to translate that into zoning language. Asking, as Molly mentioned, asking very specific questions in our, with our online tools because some of that is going to have to be online so that people understand that we're digging a little bit deeper than the lofty goals and the objectives that are in the comp plan. So it's, it's somewhat challenging, but I think if we can spend some time, if we can spend some time outdoors before it gets too cold, that will be really good. And then just to be concise and intentional with what we ask for online too.
And that's, that's another important thing whenever I am involved in any sort of planning project and it gets to be fall, I start pushing for those outdoor opportunities to be front-loaded. So doing some things first, yeah. And, and one of the public opportunities are really more stakeholder and, stakeholder and internal opportunities is, is a strategic walking tour. So we want to get that done. So we wanna get that done. And a couple of more public opportunities before the snow falls, because people forget what things look like when there's snow on the ground. We all know it, right?
Last thought on that, and then we'll move on and keep you on schedule, is that we wanna make sure that we are not asking the same questions that have been asked before. So we wanna make sure that we're clear, that we heard what you said before in the comp plan and here's how we're building on that and here's how we're taking it forward. So I think if people are more willing to give a little bit more of their time, as long as they know that we haven't forgotten what they said before.
I have a quick question. What is, what would be another example of a similar-sized city to Brainerd that you've worked with?
Lots of them.
What'd be the most applicable?
Most applicable comparable city?
Austin? It's, you know, the population is bigger in Austin, but the downtown, in terms of the more developed downtown, is absolutely comparable. We're currently doing a full code update for Austin.
I think Osseo is another one that comes to mind that's of similar size and has the, it's unique that you have the historic bones downtown and that's.
In both those examples, were you using form-based elements or traditional elements?
In those, I think so far in Austin, you're using mostly traditional elements. A couple of form-based examples that I have are a little bit bigger. The, the population is bigger. The one example that you have in your leave-behind packet, population was bigger, but the size of the downtown is very similar. And the form-based code really helped them enable infill development that didn't look out of place and didn't feel like it was intruding on the, on the community. So that was an example of a success story.
And if I could speak to that, Austin actually had intended to incorporate some form-based aspects. That was, if I recall, part of the RFP. In my experience, communities sometimes think they want form-based code. Once you dig a little deeper, maybe they don't, excuse me, have a full understanding of it, or somebody else wrote the RFP. What we're doing in Austin is something that is appropriate for Austin. We're gonna call out some minimum building heights in a couple of areas. And we're gonna talk about compatibility of architecture. So it's something that is compatible with getting the code adopted, compatible with what building owners can manage. And that really achieves what they wanted to achieve and hadn't really figured that out yet.
Very good, thank you. Any last questions before we let them go? Otherwise?
Mr. Chair, I do have one question. I wanna follow up on your question on Austin. Economically, also, I think Austin is kinda on a, kinda like us. Lost some big businesses, you know, some support. So that would be also complimentary to, for us, for understanding, too.
So you really have to be sensitive to what the stakeholder groups can handle. When you're working on a comprehensive plan, it's much less threatening. It's, it's all bigger picture, it's all very visual. But when you get into what someone is going to have to do to get a site plan approved, that's very different. So we like to work with each community and where they are.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you so much for your presentation. Very good job.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you, I appreciate it. All right. Chair? All right?
Hey, Mr.?
Good.
How are you doing?
What's going on up?
Okay. Here we go. You? Any questions? All right, welcome to HKGI. I'll let you guys introduce yourselves. Make your presentation when you're ready.
Good, good afternoon, good evening. I'm Jeff Miller with HKGI. And I'll be the project manager for this project.
And I'm Rita Trepp. I'll be the lead planner for the project. Yeah, I can advance my own slides then, it's always easier. We are pleased, Chairman and members of the commission, we are happy to, to be here before you. There's four sections to our presentation. One is to just give you a brief overview of who we are and our experience that's specific to this project. And then Jeff will go through the project approach and some of the opportunities that we see as we prepare to have this discussion this evening. HKGI is a thirty-eight-year-old firm. We're based in the Twin Cities. We do a lot of our work in Minnesota and greater Minnesota, as well as in the Twin Cities area. We also touch projects in Iowa, in Wisconsin, and Michigan, and North and South Dakota. Our goal is to help communities create places that enrich people's lives. So that's really our focus, is working with each community individually and trying to respond to their unique needs. We are comprised of planning and zoning, urban design and landscape architecture. So we are different than many of the firms you may see this evening because we are solely focused on those areas of expertise. But as needed, we do partner with other firms, engineering, environmental, architecture, as needed to tailor to each community's needs. HKGI has a lot of zoning expertise. We have been involved with zoning code rewrites, zoning code updates, the development of new character or form-based districts, so very specific to a particular area. We also provide day-to-day planning services to communities, smaller communities that are in and just outside of the Twin Cities metropolitan area. We also provide legal expertise and testimony as needed for land use and zoning cases. And all of the staff that you will see in terms of the planning staff have all worked for cities themselves. And so we bring that experience of being on the implementation side of the zoning ordinances and the ordinances that we create and really focus on how to try and make it easier for not only the public, but for staff and the planning commission and the councils to implement. In addition, we wanted to make sure that you understood the breadth of what we do, because we do think that these other experiences that we have do contribute positively to the zoning code rewrites and the projects that we work. So we do do a lot of comprehensive plans. Also, we have staff that are involved with parks and trails. We have streetscape design and site, uh, site design. So we have a lot of different expertise and we do think that contributes positively because we understand how those other components of a community work together. So we're able to bring that expertise and have those urban designers and landscape architects available when we need it, to really provide that on-the-ground experience as people interrelate to a site themselves. So the five primary team members that you will see, Jeff and myself, are before you. Brad Shybe is the principal in charge and he's one of the heads of our firm. He's also a planner who serves day-to-day planning services and works on zoning ordinances. Laura Chamberlain is also a planner. The four of us will probably be the lead planners and then Tim Solomonsen, our landscape architects, will help with some of the graphic elements. Because we do place a priority on trying to graphically illustrate some of the principles that are in a zoning code. Obviously, the entire code can't be made in graphics. That would make it a lot easier. But we do think it's important to incorporate graphics. And we've tried to incorporate in our presentation some examples of the different graphics we've used in different communities. As I said, we, we try and tailor it, so we respond to the unique needs of the community in trying to illustrate the particular issues that they may have. So I wanna touch a little bit about our experience because we think that sets ourselves apart from others. We have done a few full zoning code rewrites. We have two that are recently completed and we have three that are currently underway and one that is through the adoption process. So we think that we really bring to you the knowledge of how to do an entire zoning code rewrite. We have worked with unified development codes, both in creating one from scratch and then updating a UDC that had been in place for a number of years. We have worked in our communities where we've worked on comprehensive plan updates. We do follow those often up with zoning code updates and those are targeted. So we take the most important elements of the comprehensive plan and start doing targeted updates to the zoning code as needed. We have, we have done a fair amount of character or form-based districts and standards. Our experience has been a lot of communities talk about form-based elements that are generally more appropriate to do in particular districts, rather than across the entire city. At least in the upper Midwest, we haven't seen as many full form-based districts because of the challenges of implementation. And so we've created form-based districts and targeted areas in communities where infill is really important or the character of development is really important. That's where we've developed form-based zoning districts. We've also worked on mixed-use districts, adding housing types. A lot of folks are very interested in missing middle or the idea of how do we support housing between single-family and apartment buildings and trying to find more ways to do smaller lots or twin homes or townhomes or other types of things. So we've been working a lot in our zoning codes on how to address the challenges of supporting a variety of housing types. And we try and work on easy-to-use code formats, though recognizing the preferences of the city clerks and the staff and what they need to see, as well as how this code fits in to the rest of the city's processes. It's challenging to totally create a different code that doesn't work with the city. So we're able to work on that element as well. And then, as I said, graphics are an important part. And we try and target the graphics to what is really needed to illustrate the concepts that we're talking about. In terms of communities that are relevant to Brainerd, we worked in a number of communities that are similar in population. We've also worked on a number of river or lake environment. A few of our day-to-day planning services are lake communities. And we've worked, both Winona and Onalaska, were full code rewrites. So those are river communities. Obviously, those two communities that I talked about, Winona has a lot of historic character. So part of our job there was to try and talk about infill development in their historic downtown. We've worked a lot with built-out cities. So obviously, growing communities have their own issues. Communities that are looking for infill and redevelopment, that is a different challenge. And so we have communities where we're doing that right now, where they are completely built out and we're looking at how do you support infill within neighborhoods where single-family is the dominant housing type? And how do you incorporate mixed-use or other types of housing within those neighborhoods? We have, as I talked about, interest in broadening the variety of housing types, so I won't talk about that again. And talking a little bit more about a shift from use-based to character or form-based. Many of the codes that we've worked on still primarily use the use-based system, so the Euclidean system. They don't totally transform to the character or form-based, but we are able to add elements, either on a district basis or on a use basis, to try and address the concerns that we might have with infill. So those are things that we are familiar with.
You might need to point, if you point it behind you, it might help.
Was that you?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll just do this and you can move it. Point it at the tech guy. We just wanted to highlight for you some of the freestanding cities that we've worked with, because it's important, we know, to understand. We look at every community as being unique, but there are certainly lessons learned as we move from community to community. And so we are able to use some of that knowledge from what has worked in other places as, to address challenges that you may have. So we've worked in a number of communities, specifically on comprehensive plan and zoning. So we just wanted to highlight what those were. As I mentioned, we've done two complete unified development codes. One, Winona, was a complete rewrite and we created the new UDC. Onalaska was a complete rewrite, but it was an existing UDC. We've also are currently working on zoning and subdivision code updates for the Lindstrom and Shoreview and those are complete overhauls of their codes. In Grammeray, Jeff worked on the complete update of their housing regulations. So again, the idea of how do we diversify the types of housing that might be in the community. And in the Benton County, we also did targeted updates related to their comprehensive plan, where we identified what were the priority items and how do we make those changes. Jeff and I were the primary planners for these projects and we are the ones that you will primarily see for this project. We always think it's important to have in front of you the people you will be working with. And so these are the things that we have direct experience with and we will be the people that you see on a frequent basis, talking about the elements that are important to you. These are just examples of where we've worked on character or form-based mixed-use districts. So as you can see, we have a lot of experience, both within the Twin Cities metropolitan area as well as with communities that are outside. So again, they range different scales and the advantage to that is we can use that knowledge from different scales to tailor it to what is appropriate to the different areas that we're looking at. I can, Shoreview is one I'm working on right now and we are looking at form-based and mixed-use districts, but we are actually creating multiple ones. And so we're able to tailor it to reflect the unique character of those different districts that they want. And then I didn't wanna leave our experience without mentioning some of the targeted code updates. Sometimes in a community, they just have a particular issue. And so these are the issues that we've been working on over the last decade. So it's important, in case these are issues that you face, that you know that we do have direct experience with even just these targeted. Most recently, I've been working a lot on accessory dwelling units and trying to address that in a number of communities, both as part of rewrite processes, as well as just an independent discussion about how you address those, both in a city as well as in a county level. So it'll be different, character and different discussions depending upon the scale of the community you're working with. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jeff, who will talk more about our project approach.
All right. So I'm gonna try to be quick with this so we have time for you to ask us questions. We have our proposal, the, the approach is in there, the timeline's in there, the steps are in there. So I'll try to go quick with this. First off, believe it or not, we think zoning is fun and rewarding. You don't hear that very often, but, and I don't think Rita and I would've said that a few years ago, but we've had great experiences, especially with the rewrite projects of really bonding with planning commissions and the staff to dig in and just fix what they have. So in Onalaska, I think we reduced their, their code by like half because it was just so big and unwieldy. I don't believe you have that issue specifically, that it's unwieldy, but I do know you have like eighty sections or something like that. So maybe we can cut that in half to make it comparable. But it's fun because we're corralling all the big ideas in the comp plans and other plans into usable development standards. We're eliminating a lot of bad things, inconsistencies, redundancies, confusion, streamlining the development procedures, learning best practices from other, from other cities, which is something that's really helpful. And so we've, in our, in our other projects, we've looked at so many other cities where they do certain things better than other cities, so that we can bring that to your code. And then creating an easy-to-use code and just making development easier in the city, getting rid of those barriers of the code. Our general approach is, like I was trying to say, is to really collaborate with you as the planning commission and staff and then whoever those other important stakeholders are, both internal and external. We really do our best to listen to what people are telling us. We'll use what you have in your comp plan. It looks like you have a lot of input in there from the community already. And then what we get during this project. And then we'll explore the options and then we'll create the, the plan. It's a five-phase approach. Initiating the project is really just getting us up to speed on what, what you want, what you have, getting public participation in pla, planned in place. Then we diagnose your current code and map, figure out what the issues are, what needs to be fixed, what you want to be fixed. The annotated code outline is really saying, what is the structure of the new code so that it works better, it's easier to find things. The public can use it, developers can use it. Then we draft the code and map and it's one, one phase, but it's the big one. So we break that one up into modules and I'll talk about that in a minute. And then we have the final code and map is the last phase. The collaboration's really important, as I said. Especially with Onalaska and Winona, we really bonded with the planning commission. They, they were really participatory in the meetings. We had long meetings. They sometimes would ask for even longer meetings, which we didn't even want that, but we were willing to do it, of course. But also with city staff, with the council, you know, the other committees and commissions that might get involved with your code update, other stakeholders. that might get involved with your code update, other stakeholders, and then the public. When we, in that phase one, we'll nail down the public participation plan based on who needs to be engaged, what's the objective of the engagement and when it should occur. In general, we found with zoning projects, it's better not to bring the public in too early, because they need to see something that's being done. A lot of people don't care about zoning too much if you don't show them what you're proposing. Not that we couldn't do that here, because if there are issues, we would do it as early as you want to. An example of that in Winona was, they had rental housing landlords that were really, really interested in the zoning code and how it was going to impact parking in downtown specifically. So, we ended up working with them right away and got their input. So, we can tailor that to whatever works best for your community. The tools that we typically would use for this type of project would be a project webpage, surveys, or interactive online technology, stakeholder listening sessions or interviews, newsletters, flyers, handouts, open houses, either in person or virtual, based on where things are at, at the time that they need to happen, and then, a public hearing as is required. So, our approach is to implement the 2035 plan, which is what you're looking to do. We have looked at the plan and seen that there are a lot of goals, policies and strategies that you have in there that are really relevant to updating your code. So, it looks like there's a lot to work with, which will help us a lot in going the right direction. And, you know, basically zoning, the way we look at zoning can regulate what the city wants instead of just what is not wanted. So, and that's kind of the gist of form-based codes, I would say, is that it's getting at what you want and not saying, you know, these are the things we don't want. We'll diagnose the current code. One thing that we do upfront is we do a lot of, we do a fair amount of mapping, so first we'll look at the existing districts and, you know, are there purpose statements? Are they helpful? Some cities don't have any purpose statements, they're always helpful if they're done well, but some cities have purpose statements that are just outdated and might be redundant across districts and that sort of thing. And then, we'll identify inconsistencies between the future land use map and the zoning map. I do have an understanding that you may be working on the future land use map at this point, so, you know, we would have to take that into account on getting that completed prior to doing the zoning map. And as I said, we do a mapping exercise where we, it sounds really simple, but just mapping categories of districts, so for instance, commercial, the red map on the bottom, and then residential, the yellow and the brown on top. Mapping them separately as categories and then looking at how they're on the map really tells you a lot about how they're working and you might even find some districts that aren't even on the map, so that's helpful, because maybe you don't need those. But, sometimes there's just a couple properties that are zoning something and they don't, you don't really need to keep that district. So, it sounds like from your RFP that you are looking to reduce or combine some districts, so this would be a great way to get at that. And then, restructuring the code, the new outline, we would set that up and we would produce a report that says, these are the issues that are priorities and this is the new structure of it. And looking at your current code, it seems like there would be a significant restructuring of those sections. And, that's just from our, you know, preliminary view of the current code. And then, we would update the code in modules, so we'd break it up, we'd focus on certain things and then probably be three or four modules. And we determine that in that outline that we were just talking, that I was just explaining. We'd sequence those modules so that allows the updates to build upon each other. Typically, that means really zooming into the districts first, so that you're not updating things and then you get rid of a district that uses those standards. So, typically, it's districts and then it's standards and then it's procedures, to be very kind of simplistic about it. But, the other purpose of that is to make the chunks manageable for you to review, so that we don't hand you a full code and say, what do you think of this? And then, just really quickly, some of the opportunities that we would anticipate in looking at your code and the other work that we've done is that we, the code would benefit from more tables, so putting uses into tables is really helpful, because then you figure out that you have things that are not needed or redundant or use different terms in different districts and that sort of thing. And same with the dimensions of like lots, setbacks, building heights, all those things. If they're across lots of districts, it's really helpful to just put them in tables so that the developers or property owners can look at the districts and see how things different, differ across the districts. And then, we'll talk about permitting levels as far as what uses are allowed as of right. They're allowed, but they have specific standards, they're in accessory use or they require a conditionally used permit. It sounds like you're looking at bringing in housing types into your code, this is something where we've been working with Grammeray on a lot, really expanding the housing types from just single-family to kind of multifamily or single-family townhouse multifamily and really zoning, zooming into what the housing types are that you want in the city. So, that gets into lot size differences, setback differences, heights and parking issues. Development standards. I can't remember if your code has these, I don't think you do, but what we've been doing in the codes we've been doing, where we rewrite them, we bring them all into one section and make them easy to find for developers and property owners. And then, form-based standards, that gets into build-two zones, the scale of buildings being compatible with existing buildings, are there entrances oriented to the streets? Are the buildings articulated so that they're not flat or blank walls? And that gets into the transparency component. And then, lastly, is development procedures opportunities. We also, if we can, put that into a table so that everything's reviewed, number one, and then you can see how things could be improved upon across the different procedures. But, for people that are coming into, with applications, they can go to the one table and see everything that's required for a procedure, you know, in a simple format. So, it often ends up streamlining it and just making it easier to use those procedures. But that.
Let's, we'll go to the questions, I'll have David start with his questions.
Jeffrey, I got two questions. First, I'll start and then after that, I'll just open it up to the rest of the planning commission to ask any questions they have. These questions were asked, I'm asking all of the consultants this evening. So, the first one is, from your understanding of the project, what do you believe will be the most challenging task?
Well, so, from our experience, I think the most challenging task often is prioritizing what you want to fix. So, oftentimes, if you say you want to rewrite your whole code, you'll get into a topic or a section of the code that you don't really want to fix that much, but once you, if you don't identify that, all of a sudden, we could spend time on something that you don't really want us to spend time on. So, the importance of doing that diagnosis upfront is to have this group and staff and the community who's ever involved to really hone in on what's important, what are the priorities. And I'll give you an example is, in two of the codes we've worked on, manufactured homes or mobile homes have not been priorities, but once we get into them, the city would start to say, well, could you fix that? Could you, could you shorten it? You know, do all these things and all of a sudden, you're in this kind of a sinkhole topic that they, the city didn't really want us to work on. So, I think that's one of the biggest challenges, is really being clear about what are the priorities and what are the things you don't want to prioritize.
The second question I have is specific to your proposal. In your proposal, you list a price of $100,000. I just want to clarify, is this a not-to-exceed cost? Is this a base fee? And what issues do you generally encounter that cause change orders which result in increased fees?
Yeah, so, our anticipation was that that was a not-to-exceed fee. And change orders, the things that most often require those or would have us request those would be what I just described, is all of a sudden, we're going into a topic that was not identified in the evaluation or the diagnosis report. And not that we're not going to touch everything in the code, if the goal is to rewrite the code, and I think David might have said it's a replace and repeal, repeal and replace situation. We will touch everything in the code, so that it's all formatted in the right structure. But, if something during that process becomes, you know, we really want you to go into this topic and we didn't discuss that, that would be one reason we might request a change order. Another one would be if there's lots of extra meetings, so, you know, say the public gets really honed in on some topic and it's controversial and you decide you want to have additional open houses or additional surveys or something like that, I think that would be the other thing that would probably lead to a change order request.
Very good. With that, I'll open questions to commission members.
I have one.
We'll start with Chris.
Could you touch on task four, the, your module approach, a little more? I'm not sure, so the modules aren't necessarily districts, they're determined by the tasks one through three, a lead-up to kind of, I guess if you could just explain it one more time.
Sure, and I'll take that on just because I, both of us have been working so intimately with this. What we've found, and Jeff alluded to this, is that if we would do the entire code update and give it to you, it would be, if you put the document back up there, not as big as that, but a lot to go through at one time. So, what we have found in our process is that by doing the annotated outline, we identify what the structure is that you want and then we pick out sections or groupings of sections that can work together and then we do those in modules. And that's our terminology for taking parts of the document and working through those, getting those edits to staff and then getting it to the planning commission to review. So, it's just a way of sub, of sectioning off the review process, so you're not overwhelmed. However, it is important to do them in a particular order, because as Jeff talked about, it's important to establish, for example, your districts before you go into certain standards, because those standards may be based on how you structure your district. So, if we are going to consolidate districts, we would want to make sure we know the direction we're headed in those districts and deal with establishing the districts, what are lot sizes and structures, before, for example, we get into parking or landscaping, because we may, in writing the code, refer to those districts and so, you want to have those things established. So, typically, our modules are things like zoning districts, lot size, district standards, site standards. We might do use-specific standards or things that are standards for, for example, your industrial uses. Then, we would follow it up probably with things like landscaping, parking, sign, those signage afterwards. We usually end with procedures. Procedures can kind of happen whenever, but again, it's good to establish the zoning parts, because in those discussions, you come across things that are related to procedures and so, you can address those issues as you move through. So, that's what, does that make more sense, kind of, as a way of just chunking it? And that's our terminology.
Good approach, thanks for the explanation.
Very good. Mr. DeVal.
Yes, in your scope, your timeline, you include a lot of planning commission meetings, it looks like bimonthly meetings during the course. There are those, the character of those, are those updates or are those in your mind work sessions? You use the example of the long meetings with the planning commission and some of your other experiences. Could you tell us maybe the character of those meetings in your mind?
Yeah, so I think in general, they will line up with the tasks and then there's multiple meetings you see, like in May, June, July, that's those modules. So, and I would characterize them, not knowing this group, of course, but I would characterize them more as work sessions. That is up to you. I mean, we, I mean, we work on lots of projects with planning commissions and city councils. So, I mean, we do work with some cities where we're on the regular meeting agenda every time and we're at the end of the meeting typically, because if there's public hearings, of course, they're going to be first. And so, we get a half an hour or we get a slotted time. Other cities will have special meetings, basically, for the planning commission to work on this and spend, you know, two hours on it or whatever, whatever the amount of time is we think is needed. It's typically driven by the city, we'll weigh in on, you know, what we think would be best. If you don't want long meetings, that's what we would work with. The example I gave of Winona especially was, we'd say, well, we think we need, you know, a separate meeting, we can stay three hours if we need to. Okay.
It really depends on the level of detail that you want to get into, in terms of length of meeting and what we would cover. You know, if you look at the meeting schedule that's here, the first one is really a kickoff meeting, so we can get to know you. The second is really, hey, this is what we've learned so far, are we headed in the right direction? This is what we think is happening with the code, this is what we heard from the public process, if anything, we've done to date. By February, we just want to make sure that this is the outline, this is how we're going to approach the modules, you agree, these are the things we're going to fix, May, June, July are the three modules. Then, September is going to be, here's the whole code, kind of wrap-up issues and then the public hearing. So, while it looks like a lot, it's pretty targeted and we know pretty specifically what kind of the framework is for those, based on our experience in other communities.
The questions from my commission members, let's, we'll start with Jan and then we'll cross.
Okay. You had mentioned about meetings and I see for like your public meetings, now that you said it's public hearings, how many meetings do you anticipate for our public input? Because we found in our comp plan, the public feels very worthy to be involved with that. They really appreciate to be involved with what's going on in the city. So, I guess that would be my question, what are we looking at for those type of things?
Yeah, so, I mean, right now, we have in here two public meetings, one at the beginning to hear what people care about, what concerns they have about zoning, and then one at the end to bring them, you know, this is what we're recommending. So, if you're saying that they will, it's clear that more meetings would be needed, you know, we can work with you on that when we do that public participation plan. We have found zoning different from comprehensive planning and cities are different too, of course, but zoning is, has been harder for us to get people to come to the meetings. Wonder why. So, not that we wouldn't work with you to do, you know, the meetings you want to do, but, you know, at some point, we feel responsible that the meeting's not worth it, because nobody's showing up. So, so it's, I think we'd be able to tell that upfront, what the need might be for public meetings, because if people show up at the beginning, then, okay, maybe there's going to be meetings, but, I mean, we had, Onalaska, we had great success with that project. Everybody was happy with it, we had stakeholder meetings, but it got to the just general public meetings. The only people that came were the people that were involved with the project anyway.
So, I want to just add on, does the stakeholder meetings is actually where we found more benefit and that would be targeted groups? So, your realtors association, your developers, your contractors, or, and/or if there's particular neighborhood groups, or, for example, Jeff mentioned, the landlords and in Winona, it was also the university and the colleges. So, that's part of the public participation plan processes, to identify who are the people that really use the zoning code, who care about it and meet with those people, because they're going to be able to articulate at the front end at least, what they're looking for. Otherwise, if I would go up to my neighbor and say, what do you think if we would change the zoning and what are you concerned about? They wouldn't know per se, unless they had a particular interaction with the city in the last few years, then they might know something very particular. But, if you know from the comprehensive planning process that there's this neighborhood that would really benefit from that discussion, then by all means, we should incorporate that in the process and do things that either, you know, we can do things online like visual preference surveys, if we're trying to get at character, there are ways to do that or ways to do things outside that they could look at. But, that really is hard for us to answer from the outside, until we have the conversations with you and staff to understand what are, what is unique, what do you need in order to bring people into the process and what do they need to inform us on?
Very good, thank you.
Do you start with a template or a plan in place that you fit kind of economically and, or do you go with a custom plan and start from scratch in each, with each city?
We start from scratch, yeah. I mean, yeah, we start from scratch. And just looking at your code that you have today. And just looking at your code that you have today, it's really different from the other codes we've worked on. So, I, I don't mean that in a negative way, I'm just.
Oh, no, it's fine.
There's a reason you're here, Jeff.
I mean, yeah, okay, so that, we, that, yeah, we've give that diagnosis report at that, whatever meeting that is, and sometimes the planning commission's like, wow, so our code is really bad, is what you're saying? Like, well, I mean, a lot of codes are really bad because they don't get updated very often, and when they do, it's piecemeal. And so, you know, in this process, you'll, you know, you might find that, one example we have is the central business district in a city you think would be applied to the central business district, but we get into it, it's applied all over the city. So you're like, okay, something happened over time where you probably, they needed a new zoning district to be created and they didn't do it. And so they had this district that was all about downtown that was applied, you know, out on the highway, coming into the city and all these different places. So, yeah, we, we would do it more custom. Like I said, we, we do look at other cities' codes that do certain things really well, and we can bring to that to show you and say, here's what we think would be good for Brainerd. But we don't have a template of what your code should look like.
One quick question. What is the biggest resistance to form-based codes? What's the biggest resistance to form-based? Is it just unfamiliarity, or is there something specific that people lack to?
I think it's challenging to implement and the complexity of it. Actually, let me back up now because I'm working on it, in a couple of cities. And I would say with the planning commissions I'm working on right now, it's the letting go of control, because usually you use like a PUD process or something else, so the, I, or a conditional use permit. So the idea of a form-based district in general is, we tell you upfront what you want, and if you do what we want, then you'll be able to do it without a lot of process and approvals. But that lets the planning commission and council not be able to control or negotiate or make the thing. So I think that's my biggest challenge as I'm thinking about it off the top of my head of, I'm working in a couple of communities and they want form-based, but I know next week when I present it to them, they're going to push back a little bit at me and say, but I want to still be able to review that. And I don't want to put, I don't want to figure out now, do I want articulation every 50 feet or 40 feet? Because I'd rather just tell you if I like your design afterwards.
That's a good answer. Any other quick questions? We need to kind of keep moving on. Any other quick ones? Yes?
You mentioned a number of opportunities at the end of your presentation. Are those add-ons that would have additional cost, or were those just part of your package?
No, no, that's, that's just things that we, it looks like would be a benefit to your code. So, we're just, we've looked at your code, we've looked at your comp plan, we have experienced with other cities, and it just looks like these are things that would help your code be easier to use and less confusing.
Thank you.
Very good. All right, I'm going to take you to your presentation. Great job. Thank you so much. Appreciate you coming tonight.
Thank you for the time tonight.
You're very welcome.
Speed dating.
Yeah, speed dating, yes. I like it.
We were to go out to lunch.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Can you understand me? My show?
It's your show. We are ready and looking forward to it. So please go ahead.
Thank you. I'm Kendra Lindahl with Landform Professional Services, and thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. I want to tell you a little bit about Landform and why we think we're the right fit for your ordinance update. We are a multidisciplinary design firm. We work in both the public and the private sector. And what that means for you is we understands how, how codes really get implemented. We work as staff planners in a number of cities, so we write and implement the codes. But we also work for developers, trying to figure out how to actually use the code. So it's important to us that we develop together a code that is easy to understand and easy to implement. We are focused, my studio is the planning and urban design studio, and we focus on the public sector. We understand the public sector needs are different from private development, but we think the experience in both sectors helps us be a better planner for you as a city. We do have experience with hybrid codes. Hybrid codes, as I'm sure you've already heard tonight, a combination of the traditional Euclidean zoning that we're used to, that you have today, and a form-based code. Sometimes the form-based code just goes a little bit too far for people in terms of the implementation style, focusing on form, not use. Sometimes feels like it's a little too big of a change, so the hybrid really allows us to focus on areas like the downtown where we really do have an architectural character that we're trying to preserve, and maybe in some of the residential areas, less so. We have a professional team that understands the unique character of Brainerd. We have experience working with small towns, although growing up in Aiken, this was the big city, coming over here was, was the big city. But we understand how small towns operate and the importance of working with the community to develop a code that reflects the unique character of Brainerd. And that, that character certainly is changing and it will continue to change. What retail looks like in the future, we're all trying to react to. And that's one of the reasons that the hybrid code that we're proposing actually kind of makes a lot of sense in retail areas. Retail's changing dramatically for the last 10 years or so, and it'll be something that we need to continue to watch in the post-COVID area, era, and how that affects our commercial districts and specifically our downtowns. But we're really committed to creating tools that work for you. Our firm focuses on relationships, so we're not going to take a code template that we did somewhere else and give it to you doing a find, replace. But we are going to use the things we learned from other cities to help make your code better. We are going to work with you to figure out where the priorities are and what's important to the city of Brainerd. This is your team for the code update, myself. With Landform for 21 years, prior to that was with a number of cities as a staff planner. In my time at Landform, I've built the planning and urban design studio to focus on urban design. Landform is celebrating its 25th year this year. So as a small business, we've struggled through a couple of recessions since then and continued to diversify, but focus on being a small firm that can build relationships with our clients over the long term. Emily Ostis is one of our designers. She's our graphic expert. She'll really help us develop images for the comp, for the plan that really help people understand what the words in the ordinance are trying to say. We're really moving away from really word-intense ordinances to more graphic-based, because I think we're visual people. Show me what you want me to do and it's going to be easier for me to do it. So that's Emily's role, is putting together a document that's visually appealing, easy to understand. And TJ Holfer is another one of our planners. TJ will do a lot of the heavy lifting in terms of pulling the ordinance together. The three of us will work from start to finish on your ordinance to develop a new zoning ordinance that functions for Brainerd. The first way we'd kick off the process with a kickoff meeting with staff and, and the commissioners or steering committee that, that the city develops. And at that meeting, we'd really refine the project. It's really, really important at the beginning to define how we're going to move through this. We've put together in our proposal a schedule that we think makes sense with key deliverables at key points. But really, that kickoff meeting needs to develop that, and we all need to commit to that to keep us on track and moving forward. Certainly, as part of that kickoff, we envision a couple of days in town with our team photographing and perhaps even doing some drone video of the city to understand what's really important and include some stakeholder meetings so we can hear from you, we can hear from council and, and, and key business owners and residents to kind of hear in terms of the zoning ordinance, which is implementing the comprehensive plan that you just adopted through a really robust process. So we know the big picture, but we want to kind of understand some of the key things that need to be preserved in this ordinance process. And so we envision about a 10-month process. We would really hope that we could get started this month or, or October so that we can walk around before you-know-what starts flying and it's too cold out there. Farmer's Almanac says it's going to be a heck of a winter. So this is our process. Certainly, we can adjust this with staff and the, and the team, but this is a proposal that we think is doable, gives us time to work together to develop the tools that are needed to develop this new zoning ordinance. A couple of images, and I think some of these were in the proposal, but we really want to reflect the, the, the graphic component of this in the slides. So I think one of the outcomes might be to reduce the number of zoning districts. Some of the zoning districts that you have today are very similar, and maybe we don't need them. Maybe there's a different way to do that through the, the hybrid code where we can consolidate some of those and really focus on what's important in the different districts. And then we really like tables and charts, and these are just a couple of examples. The, the middle one is really a land use table about where different uses are, are allowed. And then an example of, we like to create a graphic for each zoning district, a very clear, simple graphic that says, here's how you can build on your lot, whether you're a single-family home or a commercial use, or an industrial use frankly. What are my setbacks? What are my build-to-lines? What are my height limits? And you can really do that on one page. It's really easy to understand, and that's a goal, I think, of all ordinances frankly, that we're trying to work on these days, whether it's a hybrid or a traditional zoning ordinance, graphically intense to help people understand. Again, the zoning map has a lot of zoning districts, and certainly some of them serve a, a important purpose, but some of those I think can be consolidated. I think it's important that we have different districts when we're really trying to accomplish something different. There are a lot of neighborhoods, for example, that are very similar but seem to have different zoning districts. I think there's ways in the code to, to still retain the unique character of, say, a 1950s post-war neighborhood, really, that isn't that different from some of the older neighborhoods near Gregory Park. You could still, I think, establish some of the same performance standards and make the code simpler to read, understand, and implement. So I think I really look forward to the chance to travel the city with you guys. I think I know where I go when I come over here, but it's really important to hear what's important to you and what elements you think reflect your city that we want to preserve. So our firm is really about, as I said, building relationships. We think that the zoning document is a really technical document, as, as we said, implementing the comprehensive plan. But this nearly one-year process to update it is pretty intense, and it's really about working with people you trust and frankly, that you like. And our boutique firm offers the expertise in writing and implementing zoning codes. We're creative. We have a graphic team that can help give you imagery and provide social media posts that tell the story. And frankly, we provide exceptional customer service. For a firm our size, this is a significant project, and the city of Brainerd would be a priority for our firm and our team from start to finish. I would be the principal in charge, and you have my commitment on this project, that it will be something you can be proud of. So I know we had a short time and we're, so I will be respectful with my presentation, but happy to answer questions. I feel like I sort of raised, I apologize, but wanted to give time for questions and discussion.
That was a great job. Thank you. David, let you start with your question.
Kendra, I just got two questions. I'm asking all the consultants tonight, and after that, I'll open it up to the rest of the commission for any questions they have. The first is, from your understanding of the project, what do you believe will be the most challenging task?
I think the most challenging task in a project is always that setup that I talked about. I think particularly when you're shifting from a traditional Euclidean zoning ordinance like you have to a hybrid code, it's really important that we set up the process at the beginning and together commit to that. So what do I mean by that? Am I working, you know, with David and staff? Are we going to have a steering committee that's made up of planning commissioners, council members, and/or public members, establishing that process? And then putting together the schedule and committing to that. I think one of the challenges we have when we implement this is we agree to it, and then somewhere along the way, there's a group or a person that's kind of rethinking what we agreed to. And that's when we sort of lose our momentum. So it's really important to have a good foundation that we all agree on moving forward from the beginning.
Second question is more specific to your proposal. In your proposal, you list a price of $99,995. Just want to confirm, is this a not-to-exceed cost, a base, or a base fee? And what issues do you generally encounter that cause change orders which result in increased fees?
Yeah, that is a fixed fee or a not-to-exceed based on the scope we put together. But certainly, what we envision in that kickoff meeting is making sure that the scope that we put together, based on the RFP, is the scope you want. So we can certainly refine that. Where we get sideways on the project and change orders are required, I don't think would be a surprise to anyone as we add more meetings? Or we have a meeting and we change direction? Again, back to that, what's our scope of work? We get halfway through and we decide, you know, I'm just not comfortable with the direction we're going. I want to do less form-based and more traditional, or something like that, after we're partway through the process. So again, that's why really agreeing at the kickoff that this is our work plan is important because once we vary from that, either by adding meetings or changing the scope of work, that's when we tend to be.
Thank you. Thank you. Questions from the commission?
Could you talk a little bit about your approach to engage the public?
We, our proposal as it is, is really working through the social media. I think you had a pretty robust comp plan process, and I find that when you follow it so quickly with the zoning ordinance, you get a lot of burnout. So we want to use social media with staff, Facebook, website, to keep people up to date on what we're doing and give them opportunities to provide feedback. I'm having a brain freeze about the name of the program, but we have a program that allows people to give comments and provide feedback throughout the process, and I apologize, I'm just having a brain freeze. That we would, we would encourage staff to set up on the city webpage, and it's a great way to, for people to ask questions. We also want to publicize the key meetings and check-in points, because there are several check-in points where we're going to be able to say, at the planning commission, here's our first meeting, again, here's our framework. Now, we have more of an outline, we've done a few months of work, here's our outline, and we want to encourage people to participate that way. Ours, and we'll certainly work with you to, to refine it, but given the work on the comp plan, we do not have a, a citizens committee in that kind of a way. We certainly could add open houses, but I feel like in the current environment that we're in, the social media and those kinds of tools are the best way. But certainly, you know your city and we're happy to work with you to modify that.
Thanks.
Very good.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Thank you so much for coming, by the way. We certainly appreciate that. We're, we've had the opportunity to listen to teams tonight that are gigantic companies, and, and you've used the term boutique firm, which I'm familiar with. And I'm going to put you on the spot and ask you, what is, what is the weakness of using a boutique firm versus a, a, a much larger firm in this type of work?
Well, I think regardless of how big the overall firm is, I think you need to look at how old, how big the department is. But I think the difference is if you want to be able to say that you've got a team that's worked for 75 cities, that's not us. But what we can tell you is the cities we work for, we have long relationships with. I think the shortcoming is that you don't have 500 people behind me, but you have three of us committed to this project.
Other questions? Teresa?
I was going to ask, what are some cities similar in size to ours that you've worked with before?
Sure. Well, the, the city of New Richmond, Wisconsin, is one of the cities we did a hybrid code for. And they're a growing city, just over the border. And they're a growing city, just over the border. And they have a similar historic downtown. And because of the bridge over the river near Stillwater, they've had a burst of bedroom community kind of development, residential development, a little bit different. We're currently working for a number of cities on the suburban edge, including the city of Big Lake, which is about twelve thousand people. That is rapidly growing, has centered around a lake, so in that way, similar. Also has a historic downtown, but is now growing with new development around the edge of the city. A lot of our cities are smaller cities in the urban area, because those are the ones where we serve as the full-time planner. But a similar-sized city that we worked for is right next door. For two years, I served as interim community development director for the city of Baxter. So, similar-sized community, but a very different community. So, size, I think, is less important than the needs of the community and the character of the community.
Jan, please.
I'd ask your experience on cities that have lost some of their economic businesses that helped support it. Have you worked with many cities like that?
Yes. New Richmond is a similar city. I wanna clarify, they lost a lot of their retail. They had a similar downtown, historic downtown that was very robust, lots of retail. Over time, like a lot of cities, they lost some of that. So, we worked as part of our ordinance update with their economic development staff. And we're really focused on making sure that we kept options open for different types of developments, so that the ordinance was written in a way to get to yes, rather than to provide hurdles for new creative development types. Frankly, a lot of our clients are cities that are trying to attract new business because they don't have that historic base. So, a little bit different from Brainerd. Certainly have watched, as I said, I bought both prom dresses at two different stores downtown, and I couldn't do that today. And that's not just Brainerd, that's just the change in retail. But there are a lot of things that we can do to help with economic development. And one, and frankly, the easiest one, is the ordinance. Make the ordinance easy for people to understand what you expect and get approval. Streamline that approval process with tools that allow you to get what's important to you. I think the clients we work for on the private sector would rather have a quick no than a slow no. And so, we don't wanna guess at what the city wants when we're looking at investing and building our business in a community. We wanna know, if I do X, Y, and Z, the council's gonna approve my project, and I'll be operating in September of next year. Thank you.
If the city is interested in including a zoning map update, do you have an idea of what that might cost?
You know, that actually is very inexpensive, because the nature of the work we're doing, we're kind of doing some of that anyway. I think that effort, at the end of the, as part of this process, is about a fifteen-hundred-dollar effort. We'd get the GIs data for you. We'd probably make some edits as we move through the process. But we're gonna be marking up that zoning map with staff as we're working through this anyway. So, it's a pretty simple addition. Like I said, I could finalize that with a scope, but I'd say about fifteen-hundred dollars.
Thank you.
Quick question. What's the biggest resistance to form-based codes that you get into? What's the biggest fear that it invokes people, do you think?
Great question. I think the biggest fear is that the form-based code is a change in philosophy to focus on the structure and not the use. So, I think as staff and sometimes appointed and elected officials, we're talking about the use. I want a coffee shop, I don't want this. Well, with a form-based code, what we're really looking at is what does the streetscape look like? Is it built where it's supposed to be? Is it as high or as low as it's supposed to be? And that's hard for people, because we wanna talk about what's in the building, not what the building looks like. And I think that is really the biggest hurdle, is that it's not about the business, it's about the trees and the parking lot and where the building is on the lot. And that's hard. That's just a different way of thinking from how we do things today. At the end of the day, as long as we can work with you to identify the priorities and what is important, I think it can work, but that's the biggest hurdle.
Good, good answer. Any other last questions? I'm gonna thank you for your time, that's a great presentation.
Yes, thank you very much for letting me be here tonight.
Thank you, Kendra.
Business card, copy of our PowerPoint for you today.
Thank you.
Leave behind. All right, welcome to MSA. Welcome, MSA to us, I should say.
Excellent. Okay. Good evening. I'm Chris Jansen from MSA. And we're here to talk to you guys about a zone code update. So, real quick, just our interview presentation outline, talk a little bit about the project team, our project objectives, or your project objectives, the neighborhood district story map, talk about that. And then, answer any questions you guys have at the end. So, go ahead. Again, Chris Jansen with MSA. I've been with MSA for about, am I close enough?
Yeah, you're good.
Thirteen years. Planner, worked all over the place. And with me this evening, I have Claire.
Hi, everyone. Claire Michelson. I'm a planner on Chris Jansen's team in our St. Paul office. And I'm really excited to be here tonight. I work on a variety of content and zoning administration and updates.
Yes, hi, welcome, and thanks for having us. I'm Kate Ein. I started my career in architecture in nineteen ninety-nine, and moved on and began studying with urban and regional planning and joined the team at MSA. And as part of the planning and design studio within MSA, we are really functionally... I thought my team member was a bandit, just that I was not a part of the team. Just really excited. We embrace a wholly collaborative process. And with that in mind, we've asked Keith and the team at MPC to join us as well.
Good evening, folks. My name is Keith Marvin. As Kate said, I am with Marvin Planning Consultants. I bring, and my team brings in roughly, I've got just short of thirty years of experience in planning and writing zoning codes across multiple states in the Midwest. I've had my own firm and been doing that same work for over eleven years now. So, I'm happy to join forces. And also, as part of my team, I've got a colleague, we've got a colleague in here by the name of Lauren Deeg. Lauren and I have been working together on projects for the past fifteen years. Lauren is actually an instructor at Ball State. He's an architectural person, and he's also a architectural... I can't remember what the ASAI stands for, but he is a professional illustrator. So, he's gonna be a key part of what we want to present and bring to you if we're successful.
Excellent. So, moving on, project objectives. So, Keith's gonna help me out a little bit with this. But basically, we know that you have recently gone through a comprehensive planning process. And out of that comprehensive plan, there's a pretty decent list of implementation steps. And that a lot of those are carried into this process that you guys are moving forward with, how to preserve neighborhoods, how to distinguish districts, how to preserve and enhance character, those types of things. So, the first thing Keith's gonna talk about is community character. And how...
Go ahead. You know, one of the things, as I said, I work all over the Midwest and upper Midwest. And one of the things I notice as I go to different projects is the fact that going to town to town, I tend to start looking for what's interesting or different about those communities. And one of the things I notice is that small towns are becoming, smaller towns, and I say that from about twenty thousand down, are becoming more and more identified by corporate America and from the standpoint of corporate architecture. So, I think, looking at community character and what you're looking at in your plan and what you ask for in your RFP, it's gonna be critical to come up with a zoning code that will allow you to establish that character throughout the entire, different parts of the community. Different neighborhoods are different, so they may want a different character. I mean, we were driving around, we found part of the old Burlington Northern shops and yards and some of the older buildings in that area. That's unique, something we'd be nice to build off of. So, we can do that by going through this process, and we can do it from a standpoint of not just commercial, but we also do it from the standpoint of historic preservation and historic assets. But we also can do it on the housing side, too, and different components that deal with housing and affordable housing. And I'll touch briefly on some stuff that Chris is gonna hit, but the old days, we used to do that with overlay districts. And this concept that we've proposed is a little unique in that we look at things from a concept of a neighborhood and we start felting characteristics of those neighborhoods that we want new development or infill development to occur and mimic as we go through different things. And the best way to do that is through different illustrations. And I mentioned Lauren. These illustrations that you're seeing are examples of his work on past projects and different things that him and I've worked on in the past.
Some of the other project objectives that you have include economic development, how to support infill, how to promote that, how to encourage that it preserves your character, enhances the character, those type things. And then, help local businesses grow. First, you know, focus on how can we modify this code so that it is user-friendly, so that it fosters growth, so that it fosters people, so it's visually appealing, and it's something that is easy for not only somebody petitioning to utilize and submit, but also for you to review, for staff to review, and so forth. And then, also focusing on facilities infrastructure. How we improve the overall image of the city. Preserve the history and that small-town feel that people like that character. They wanna see it enhanced, and they wanna see it carried through, but they also wanna see growth and continue to see that and provide that. And then, obviously, provide those quality systems. Now, David, I have a question. The next piece here, we built... So, our approach is the next piece that I'm gonna go over. And we built a story map. Is there an opportunity to click on that and scroll through it? If not, there is a printout. Now... Who am I asked to scroll down? Yeah, scroll down. Excellent, scroll down. So, story map. So, one of the things that we try to use with any project we do planning-wise, especially when it involves some type of public aspect, there's even all the public review, public presentation, public education. Pretty much every planning project requires some of that. And one of the tools we use is story maps. They're a great tool for educating, getting people on the same page, especially if you're gonna ask them to give input. At least give them the background so that you don't, so that you have the tools available for them to come in and say, okay, here's the point of what we're doing, here's how we're gonna go about it, and here's how I can contribute. Our proposed solution for Brainerd to basically meet that, to be very visual, use tools like this, use mapping. Obviously, a zoning map will be a part of this process, we'll come out with it. So, this is just another one of those online tools that is through that ArcGIS system, basically, that we use. Proposed solution. So, we wanna focus on neighborhood character zoning is kind of what we're looking at here. It is not Euclidean, it is not form-based, it is a hybrid of the two that takes that kind of idea of a form-based code and really looks at districts. What it does, and if you can scroll down a little bit, that's perfect. All right. So, zoning districts become parcel types. So, we start to focus in on parcel types identified based upon their overall characteristics within these kind of neighborhood areas. Then, we look at six specific uses that are assigned to those different parcel types within the community. And then, finally, you start looking at these neighborhood districts. They're assigned specific parcel types based on... Sorry.
The desires of the neighborhood.
Yes, based on the desires of neighborhood, based on the characteristics of the neighborhood, based on really what you're trying to enhance, preserve, grow, invest in those neighborhoods. And who's gonna be coming forward to help you implement a plan? 'Cause it's, you know, this is, all of this planning stuff we do is kind of this public step in getting private market reaction and getting private market to invest and do things and use this code and help you meet those goals of the comprehensive plan that we talked about before, the economic development goals, the housing goals, and those things. You're looking for this to become something people can identify with. And neighborhood-level districts is a great way to do that. And if you can scroll down a little bit here... So, one of these tools is what we call, it's a slider. It's basically a mapping tool that you can do on here. And if you hit that little, those arrows in the middle and slide it back and forth... So, perfect, stay right there. This is your existing zoning ordinance, basically mapped. So, it shows all the districts, it shows where they're at. You know, there's small, big, all-over-the-place kind of thing. Slide it back over the other way. And what we're thinking about promoting, sorry, what we've put into this plan to develop for you is these districts of, each one of these districts would have its own character, its own zoning code. Now, the lines on here, I just drew based on kind of what we were observing and what we could see from, you know, thirty thousand feet. And Jill Holman is one of the employees at MSA, and she was very familiar. She's like, oh yeah, there's this neighborhood, and that's what, you know, kind of where it's at. And then, this one identifies this way. So, these lines are not drawn, we just kind of did this for the mapping purpose to show, this is how that map would look after we implement this code that's kind of at that neighborhood level and focuses on districts. It's not that packwork necessarily, you're looking at these individual places. What it does is it fosters a distinctive, attractive neighborhood with a strong sense of place. Each one of these places, however we end up defining them through the process, wherever we end up drawing these lines and however many districts there end up being, each one of those becomes its own place that has a character, that has a code behind it that people can use, that has graphics to represent what you wanna see. And we put that all basically into this zoning code. And this is another great tool to show how to put that online, basically. So, not only do you have this paper code that you're gonna have, that you guys will use already on the basis, staff will use, to create new forms and permits and the things that people file to do to change land use, intensify land use. But you also can have kind of this online representation that people will be able to visually see and use that will help them out.
I was just gonna add, one thing that you could, the way I started looking at this, some of the towns I've worked with, I've seen the old neighborhoods that have that old corner intersection that has old-fashioned commercial or a little mom and pop or something. You know, you take this neighborhood and say, okay, they say we would like to see this. Well, we can sit there and put a parcel type that's either mixed-use, commercial, however we wanna fix it. And when we tell it, on the Euclidean side, you go down under that mixed-use district, and it may say a corner store. And we define what a corner store is. So, you start building future characteristics by the neighborhood in order to start making it work for how you wanna see each of these areas develop infill.
So, next, Claire's gonna talk a little bit about how we're gonna get to the solution. Our solution is to focus in on those neighborhood districts and develop, you know, basically a zoning code that is very unique to that individual... basically a zoning code that is very unique to that individual neighborhood. How are we gonna get there, Claire?
Yeah, um, this is, yes, this will also be on the handout with the, um, story map, but this is also in our proposal as well, but we just wanted to give a broad overview. And so initially, we would start the process with an existing conditions, walking tour with planning commission, with staff, any involved parties, and really take all of that data, photos, mapping points, and collect it all into a crowdsourced map application or story map like this, and then bring it to our first couple meetings that we had scheduled and really collaborate and build a consensus for a code outline before we started into the development, which would be our second phase, which would include periodic check-ins with planning commission and staff as well as really starting to write those general regulations and supplemental regulations that come with those neighborhood characteristics and zones that we would have already determined in our first phase. And from there, that, we hope will allow for predictable, fair, and cost-effective development regulations for people in an easy, implementable document, whether it's PDF form with illustrations as well as perhaps it's an interactive story map that is honestly, that is very easy for people to say, there's my property, I can interact with it and provide that to you as well.
Okay, finally, uh, how long it's gonna take us? We're proposing a twelve-month, if you would scroll down just a little bit. Uh, twelve-month schedule, again, uh, we start with issues and opportunities identification, identifying those neighborhoods, working with staff, with you folks, with any of the neighborhoods that may wanna be involved in that and kinda starting to draw, okay, here's basically kind of what this neighborhood is and where, where it is in, in, in Brainerd. Um, then start that code development process after we've collected all that data, move into the, okay, let's figure out how we're gonna make this look and, and how the code is gonna get us there. Uh, and then finally, adoption, and it's the third phase that we come at the end of that process. Um, that is, we, all we have for our presentation, we are happy to answer any questions you all have.
Very good, thank you very much, uh, David has a couple questions to get things started.
Yep. So Chris, for your team, I, I've got two questions, we're actually asking all the consultants, and then I'll pass it over to the planning commission for any questions they have. The first question I've, I have is, from your understanding of the project, what do you believe will be the most challenging task?
From our proposal, the most challenging task is going to be probably defining those individual district boundaries. Um, it's not an insurmountable task by any means, but there's definitely gonna have to be some, some consensus building, not only, um, amongst this group and staff, but also kind of some of those neighborhood, uh, folks that would be. And then, I think the number, probably, like how, so how small do you wanna get, you know? And there are probably some neighborhoods that are pretty tight, you know, close knit and, and have an identity already, and then there are others that this may be a process that identifies them in the end. That will be a fun task, but it, it's gonna be one that's gonna take some collaboration.
And if I can add to what Chris said, I, one of the things I think that actually by defining those neighborhood lines, uh, you, you know, your background is, uh, been, you've got a background in long-term and planning. Anytime you put a line on a map, you're gonna exclude something across the street. Honestly, the more I think about this process, if you break a line on a neighborhood, the one nice thing about it is, you're not saying this is commercial and this is residential. You can very easily butt up and blend land uses and parcel types along that line, uh, and make them work. So it's gonna, I mean, I think honestly, defining it's gonna be critical, but once we define it, we can blend a lot better than you could by just drawing a commercial district or an R1 district.
Second question that I have is actually specific to your proposal. Uh, in your proposal, you list a fee of seventy-eight thousand five hundred dollars. It's kind of a two-part question, is that a, first of all, clarification, is that a not-to-exceed or a base fee? And then the second part of that is what issues do you generally encounter that cause change orders which result in increased fees?
It's a, it's a lump-sum fee, um, so it, uh, it, it's based on the scope of work that we've put together. Um, I would say that the scope is always negotiable, um, so if there are things that need to be added prior to, while we're kinda working through the contracting phase, if, if you guys are like, hey, that, this specific meeting is not one that we're really worried about, let's, you know, cancel that and do something else. Um, that's fine. Change orders in most processes are extra meetings. I would say the amount of work that will go into this, we are anticipating, yeah, this is how much, this is the level of effort that's gonna be put into the proposal, this is what it's gonna take to get this project over the finish line. Sometimes with planning projects, at the end, there is another meeting requested by the city. Uh, most of the time, or the client is like, hey, we really just need to run through, you know, we need to do three public meetings instead of the one that we were thinking, cause people, you know, we'd like to spread them out, or whatever it is. Um, that's when we mostly see, it's, it's a, it's a change order driven by the client that's like, hey, we'd really like to add a couple meetings to this. It's not, um, part of the, the scope of, we are gonna deliver this document to you guys, here you go. It's, it's a meeting situation.
If I may add to you, Chris, so, uh, what I would take a swing at that is to say is that we're abundantly flexible. If you see part of our proposal that you're like, you know what, this is great, could you take another swing at it? Could focusing more in this area, then yes, let us know, we'll, um, take another swing at it. Secondly, I think that this team, we've worked together before, we're really great at building this understanding and consensus. And so we really customize this solution for Brainerd, and we really feel like we've, we've hit the nail on the head. Now, um, one of, uh, examples that I would use in the last year is that, you know, we have had an, another, um, planning process that we were working on, and we were about to finish it out, and, um, all meetings got canceled because of COVID. And enough time has passed that the city was like, let's, let's take, let's, let's remind everybody where we were at, um, what, what direction we're going, and rebuild that consensus. And so, the, it's usually those one-offs, um, we've been doing this long enough as a group, that we, um, generally, it's included.
I, pending some other situation beyond the one we're in right now, I don't anticipate there being issues with the, the time it'll take us to do it or anything like that. Like I said, we may get to the end of this and, and you guys are like, hey, let's have a couple more meetings just to roll this out and get some more feedback. But, we have built in the tools in here, the online tools and that type of thing, that even if somebody was not gonna make one meeting, they're gonna be able to find all of that material, all that information on the project website and easily catch up in that sense. Um, we also have a lot of engagement tools that we run through our project website, so, uh, that eliminates some of that, oh, I missed that meeting, like, I don't know what's going on, I got lost, or, you know, everything. Again, these are all public processes and we try to put everything out there, cause I shouldn't be doing anything that I can't say, oh yeah, that's what I was thinking on this, and where are you at? And listen, like, like I might as should, so.
Mr. Chair.
Very good, questions from the commission?
Could you speak a little more about your, uh, project website? And as far as, uh, public engagement goes, it looks like you'll first define the neighborhoods and then you'll want to speak with people fr- from those actual neighborhoods. I see me, meeting with neighborhood leaders, and then I see, uh, meeting with neighborhood groups. I was kinda wondering how you structure, um, uh, your public input and, and if that's tied into your project website.
Um, yes, so I'll talk about the project website first. Uh, we use it as a clearinghouse for everything, and usually, we, we, we manage it. Yeah, all the meeting, PowerPoint presentations, um, any surveys that we would end up doing, that kinda thing, you know? Most surveys go out online, most people are fairly comfortable taking them. We try to keep them short, three to five minutes, but that type of stuff gets pushed out that way. And then what we would normally ask is that the city then, um, link to our site, um, for the, for the period of the project and also use your social media networking stuff to promote it, because what?
Or, if you wanna take some of the, um, the words that we've put together, and if you want to utilize your already in-place methodology, whether that's a stuffing utility bill or a backpack, um, through the school district, you can utilize that same messaging and do hard copies or some others, and we can help you with those ideas if you feel like that, um, those are, are the ideas you wanna implement.
But I push that stuff out and you guys do it through your networks, because the other thing about these types of projects is there's a period where it has to be implemented. After we're done, after you guys are done with this process, maybe some of you, you know, there's turnover. Um, we want people to continue to be engaged and continue to find the city Brainerd as a resource. So we try to push, like, while we do the project website, so there is that, that clearinghouse, um, that anybody can go to and get the information they need, or, you know, one of you, staff, council members, um, can steer people towards, you know, like, council members are one of the ones that I would, you know, they, they're not always necessarily involved in a lot of these projects, but they get questions, right? They're talking to somebody at church, they're talking to somebody at a restaurant, and they're like, hey, I read in the paper about this, you know, thing you were doing with the zoning ordinance. The project website is a great tool for them to have in the back of their mind to say, you know what? I missed that meeting, too, go to the project website, the PowerPoint's on there, let me know if you have any questions, or, yeah, contact David, or contact the consultant, uh, we use it for that, that purpose. Um, and meetings with the neighborhood groups, again, the process we've designed starts with city staff and planning commission starting to look at, okay, where do we think these districts are at? And then we're gonna have to go to the public as part of the process and talk to them. I, there might, at that point, there might be some lines moved, or there may be some splits. We, we're really gonna have to be flexible, all of us in that process, cause that, again, that's the part that I think is gonna be fun, challenging, to try and start to define these fun areas that are gonna become places in themselves, or that already are, that are looking for some help in continuing to grow and enforce the character that they have. Um, but that there will have to be some back and forth with those neighborhood groups. Um, the website will be a great tool for that, the city will be a great tool for that as you, you know, push out that information and answer questions and direct questions back to us. Um, and then, yeah, the meetings, the meetings with those folks that will, uh, help them become part of the process and kind of be stakeholders as they will be, but also help you with implementation, because you want them to be on board. Thanks. Cause a lot of planner talk around. Yes, and yes.
Great, thank you.
Yes.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, um, so I'm just kinda looking at the proposed scope of work, uh, phase two, and I was kinda looking at some of the meetings that we would have for, um, some would be with city staff, some would be with us, the planning commission, and it seems like those would be Zoom or Skype. Is that typical for you, or is that kind of a COVID precaution, or?
It is, it is right now, I would not say it's typical, um, in, in, in the normal planning process. Um, we, if, if, if some of those need to be in person as we get out of this, great. I hope that that's the case, but we certainly, uh, have the capability to do, we, we've been doing a lot of processes completely online, um, and even in terms of public engagement workshops where we'll use Zoom and break off people into groups to, to do some brainstorming, the stuff we used to do with a big sticky wall in a room and that we used to do with, you know, stations around the room to talk to people about the different elements of, of the update or, you know, a comp plan or whatever it is. Uh, we, we migrated those online for the current time period, but, yeah, we, at this point, we put them in as, hey, we're, we'll, we have the capability to meet by Skype, Zoom, whatever you guys wanna use, um, but if we can do it in person, fantastic.
To add to what Chris has said, one of the things I've found the last several months is, COVID has shown us that Zoom has a really important place in some of the things that I do, but when we start getting into some of this, I, I prefer to get out face-to-face with people, uh, interact with the community, interact with the areas that we're dealing with. So, my hope is that we will be up here, and the way you accomplish a lot of this is, uh, Kate, uh, corrected me earlier, I, I used the term work smarter, not harder, and she said, no, you're gonna work smarter and harder. Uh, so, uh, when we start talking that way, what I, I would anticipate is that you're gonna see us come up on a day, we're gonna spend two to three days at a time in the community. Not gonna come up for a, a meeting and then go back. Uh, we need to make sure that we are using your dollars to the, and the tax dollars to the best way we can to get the most information possible while we're here.
Next question? I'm gonna jump in and ask a couple of questions. Uh, wha- what do y'all think of our current zoning, uh, ordinance, the, the code as, uh, the mass thing? Any impressions looking at it?
Um, it, it seems typical, and it, you'll have a hard, there's certainly a reason you guys are looking to update it. There's some challenges, um, I think in being clear and concise, and that it matches with the comprehensive planning process you've done, that type of thing. I, I, I don't wanna say it looks like a Euclidean zoning ordinance, but it looks like a Euclidean zoning ordinance that's been put together for three decades, you know? And so there's some inconsistency, I mean, I didn't dive all in, but there's usually some inconsistencies and some ladders that you don't really want to connect sometimes, um, that type of thing. But it, it seems, um, like a working code, but I'm glad you guys are looking at a process to go a different direction, and I think, um, definitely moving towards looking at districts, uh, looking at that kind of the form of how you want something to look, and the character is a great, is a great leap forward in that sense, and that you guys are gonna really enjoy the process. And the product, uh, in the end will be much more user-friendly and allow some, it'll get the character you want, but provide the flexibility that people are looking for, not only in those specific areas, but also people that want to invest.
Uh, my last question is, um, what is the, yeah, go ahead, yeah, I have a point, please, go ahead.
May I, uh, I was just gonna add, you know, there's an analogy that sometimes I'll use is, what got us here isn't what's gonna get us there. You know, um, you guys are, you know where you're at right now, and I think one of the things that we've put together is a unique solution, um, that's gonna be easy to use for you and implement and really capture the spirit of Brainerd, that the history, the culture, and the dreams for the future. And that's really what we want to imbue, the new code, and really make it user-friendly so that your average person, your resident can use it, as well as really making it easy for the things that you want to have happen.
And has strong visual foundations too, I know it's, it's something that every code we work on now, whether it's, you know, status quo updating, needs to have a strong visual aspect to it so that people can look at it and see what the goal is.
I'll jump to my last question, um, real quick. What is the biggest resistance to a form-based, um, uh, code that you run into? What is the biggest fear that's expressed, the biggest resistance?
Um, I'll, I'll start.
Yeah.
Uh, like I said, I've been doing this thirty years. Uh, I understand the principles of the form-based code. What I look at and I always have a concern about is trying to apply a transact to a community that's been around as long as Brainerd, and making things fit. So, that's why I've always gone towards either the overlay issues where we get what we want in a certain area, or this concept here now is going, is kind of a, it, no, it's not kind of, it is a hybrid between a form-based, cause we're saying this is what we wanna see, but we're not putting that transact across a tire city, you know, taking it down Laurel and saying, okay, everything here, here has to be this way. We're actually looking at things even in a more micro approach.
Based on character. I, I, yep, I would say, and people, people understand Euclidean zoning. People that work with it know, that can make sense, okay, yeah, you put your resident, you know, residential here, I put commercial here, sometimes there's some mix, that kinda thing. We've come up with all these new things beyond the original commercial, industrial, residential. Um, and jumping to, as Keith said, that transect for the form-based code is a, is a jump. Um, and it won't necessarily be a good fit for, for a city that's been built out using kind of that traditional zoning form. This will allow you to target specific areas and say, okay, here's what we want this to look like. It's form-based within that specific area, but it's not blanket.
Sure, all right, good answer, um, any other, uh, questions? Hearing none, I'm gonna thank you for your time, great presentation.
Thank you.
Good job, guys, thank you.
For having us.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Very, very welcome. Quick question to the group, do you wanna keep rolling, do we want a little short break? What y'all think?
We bring in a couple pizzas and some.
Everybody's good?
We'll keep rolling.
We're taking five minutes, we're taking five minutes, we're back.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Hi, are we here?
You're here.
All right.
You are, you will get oriented by David. David shall orient you.
Found the place.
Other than not breathing is, it's, that's the only way I figured it out.
Dish soap, that's the common thing, right? Dish soap. All the hockey players know that dish soap is the trick.
Where do you put it, on your glasses?
Uh, that's what I understand, yeah.
Wait, what do you do?
Uh, dish soap.
Oh, thank you. Handouts, can we do them?
Um, yeah, we can do it before or we can do it.
Thank you. Spit. That seems a little counter.
So how many do we have?
Uh, good.
Seven?
Seven, yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome. So there's somebody sitting here.
Correct, that's our chair.
Somebody listening right here. And you're here. Christopher's over here.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
One more next to Chris. One more next to Chris, to Chris's right. Thank you.
So it's a long night of presentations.
We have nineteen of them.
No, I thought a roster.
This is a roster David chose to show you.
I was like, you guys are gonna be falling asleep by the time.
No, this is interesting. We we, this this board lives for planning and zoning.
All right. Well, that makes seven of you.
How are you guys holding up?
We're doing great.
You only got one more to go.
Oh, we're doing great. It's a big decision. We're picking our team for the next year.
Yeah.
Ten months a year, right?
I know, that's what I was just saying. I'm like, you guys have to decide if you actually like the people, cuz you're gonna see a lot of them.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Hopefully without a mask in six months. Who knows? Okay, nine months. Who knows? I do.
Afraid I asked for a copy of the zoning. Take that. Nine trees lost their lives during the making of this or zoning.
I guess I was about to say, thank you.
How do you like me now?
It's actually more interesting reading than the comp plan, really, actually.
I think so.
Yeah.
Well, there, because there's an entertainment factor to the ordinance.
There is, pure absurdity. As it covers animal poultry and things like. How many pigs I can keep?
Zoning is the tool.
All right.
We give you a handout.
Awesome.
The video, so what's gonna happen is when you get to the video, I'll just, uh, James back there.
Capital assessment that was done by WSN?
I don't think I have.
My goodness, I'm getting all those printed and that thing is like, bad.
Wow.
Yeah. Half of it is parks. Roughly. And a lot of those pages are foldouts into eleven by seven.
I have a pop-up version.
Yeah, exactly.
The grouse are gonna really thrive now.
Yeah, exactly.
Your one printed copy is gonna make a lot of grouse out of it.
All righty, are we ready to pick it up again? I think we're ready to pick it up.
You can take those off while you present.
Okay, we'll do that.
All right, we are on to our fifth presentation of the evening. We have Swanson and, uh, Haskamp Consulting.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. I just wanna make sure I'm live. Um, so my name is Jennifer Haskamp. I'm the owner of Swanson Haskamp Consulting. Um, we're excited to be here tonight. Of course, it was a little bit of a haul to get up here from St. Paul, but not too bad because we don't have snow yet, although as I was driving here, they made a comment that we're in for a deep freeze tonight if you're in your out state, so hope your vegetables are covered. So that, you know, in our present, or in our proposal this evening, I actually made a comment of, we don't know where we wanna go until we know where we are today. And so, uh, in light of that, I I offer you our agenda of where we're headed. This is the roadmap of our presentation this evening. So we're going to introduce our team a little bit. Um, obviously you'll see tonight. Backwards.
That wasn't me.
Are you, who's?
I didn't touch it.
Is this, this, this works though, right?
Yeah, it did.
You gotta point it backwards.
He's just testing me, that's all right, we're good. All right, so we're gonna introduce our team. Um, obviously Mike and I are here tonight. There's a couple other individuals that I'd like to briefly introduce just to give you a sense of who else would be working with us as we work through the process and the project. Uh, we're gonna briefly, uh, give you a little bit of an overview of our qualifications and our approach that was presented in our proposal. Um, and we're going to demonstrate by example. So, uh, when we talk about the approach and the four phases, uh, that we proposed tonight, uh, we really wanted to highlight how we would go about doing that, uh, by using an example. So Mike's gonna share a little bit of his experience, um, with respect to Madison, Wisconsin. So it's okay that it's Wisconsin. I promise we can still do it in Minnesota. Um, we're gonna also dig a little bit into Brainerd, so obviously, um, that's where we are and so we tried to get a sense of who you are as a community. Um, I have to tell you, I was a little excited to come up here. Growing up, uh, my family actually had a cabin just north of town. Um, and so my dad and my grandpa built the cabin and we used to come into town and go to church and would walk around downtown and grab groceries and that was more than thirty years ago, so things have changed a little bit, but there's still a lot that looks the same, so I was kind of excited to come back. And then we're gonna wrap it up with a little bit about our implementation strategy. So we know an important part of this process is making sure whatever comes out of it becomes something you can use and makes your life and your job easier and makes the job of your staff easier, um, and your council. So we're gonna talk a little bit about hopefully how we can do that. Finally, obviously, we'll have time for question and answer. All right, uh, so I'm not gonna dwell on this, um, but I am gonna talk a little bit about who's on our team. And so the the key point up there is who you see is who you get. Um, so we have a very specific tailored team. Uh, my firm is a small firm out of St. Paul. Uh, the folks that are on my team, uh, specialize in comprehensive planning, in zoning, uh, and in helping municipalities with their zoning daily planning, uh, activities. So, uh, we actually represent several communities, uh, at our firm, so we actually sit, uh, in David's shoes in many places and know the importance of making sure a code is something that you can use, understand, implement and apply. So, um, so that's really going to be the perspective that our team brings to it. Mike Lamb of Michael Lamb Consulting is going to lead the the technical aspects of developing the code and the the urban design aspects uh, of the form-based sections or the hybrid sections, which we'll talk about in a few moments. Um, and I also wanna highlight the fact, uh, that we've included a gentleman by the name of Todd Graeb, who's actually a, uh, professional videographer uh, on our team. And so we were joking at our firm of, how do you make a video about zoning? That sounds kind of boring. Um, but I, but I assure you, if anyone can do it, it's probably Todd. So, so Todd is actually a commercial videographer. He works for, um, a lot of actually big commercial entities, uh, but he happens to be a personal friend of Ellison Yanner, who's our, on my, or part of my firm, um, and is the project manager that we're proposing this evening. Um, so we've talked to him over the last year or two and kinda tried to convince him that he should use his awesome skills as a storyteller and apply that to planning and zoning. And somehow we convinced him to do it and so he's on our team tonight. So we're pretty excited about that, um, and he's very talented and and you'll see a little bit of his work a little later in our presentation. We have what we call a very streamlined approach. We've identified essentially four objectives and four phases uh, to accomplish your zoning ordinance update. Uh, so the objectives that we've identified are those which are actually mostly from your RFP. So the first one being, um, it matches your needs and objectives. So that's really about implementing your recently completed twenty thirty comprehensive plan, making sure that the zoning that gets established actually supports that comprehensive plan document. Uh, Mike just joked that he finds comprehensive plans maybe not all that entertaining. I myself.
I said zoning is more interesting than.
I myself love a good comp plan. Um, so I I took a look at yours, uh, to try to get a sense of who you guys are and where you wanna go and what you're hoping to be in twenty thirty-five. Um, and it's our goal to make sure that whatever comes out of this process supports that effort and that initiative. Uh, so obviously we talked a little bit about it needs to be easy to use, it needs to be something that makes your life easier, it makes staff's life easier. Um, and then it's also something that if a developer walks in, they understand what their rules are and what they can do um, on a specific parcel or in a specific district. Uh, three, uh, it considers the market context. Here's another one that sometimes is a little bit hard for folks to grasp that your zoning ordinance actually, um, should have some, some of its regulations, uh, its dimensional standards, its uh, requirements rooted in what will the market actually bear. So part of this is getting an understanding of, you know, if a retailer or a user looks at a site, what do they need? How big does it need to be? Uh, what types of square footages do they look at? What types of setbacks work for them? Uh, what matters in terms of visibility, um, of signage, for example? So really considering what that market context is. Um, and finally, that is graphically oriented and it's ready to go. So it's something that once this is done, there's not the, now what do we do with it? What's next? That is, it's just ready for you guys to use. So the four phases that we identified in your proposal, um, are a vision setting process, that vision setting is not to be redundant of your, of your comprehensive planning effort. It's really meant to find specific areas, um, and understand the neighborhood context, understand, uh, your commercial corridors, et cetera, uh, and get a sense of what's your vision for some of those key areas within your community and further refine them from what's in your comprehensive plan. The next phase is discovery. That's where we'll actually do a little bit of 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 reading of your current existing zoning code, um, probably on a Saturday night because that's when it's the most fun. Um, and we'll take a look at it and compare that to what's actually happening in your community and get a sense of where are the non-conformities, where are the inconsistencies? What are the things that we need to update, um, and change and what do we need to approach, um, as we go through this process? Based on the vision and and then the discovery section, we move into what's called our recommendations and documentation section. That's where we'll take a look at specific areas and based on what we learned during those first two phases, give you some recommendations about whether we think specific areas should be more form-based in terms of how you approach them. Um, maybe there's areas where a hybrid, uh, of both a form-based and a use-based code make a lot of sense. And maybe there's some areas that actually still make sense to leave, uh, and just update and and remain as use-based, uh, code sections, if you will. So this, uh, this phase three is really where we work with you to say, what's the direction before we put pen to paper to make sure that what we are putting together is something that supports your your needs. Um, finally, phase five or four, not five, because it's nine o'clock, prepare and implement. So, um, once we get all that feedback, we actually start the documentation and the the code development process. So if you look at our our schedule, which is at the bottom of our handout, it was also in the proposal, that's where actually a lot of the heavy lifting occurs and that phase is the longest phase because that's where we actually put to pen, pen to paper and and create the code for you. So using an example, uh, to help illustrate how those phases work and the types of information we look at, uh, we thought we would use a representative, uh, project. Again, it's in Wisconsin. Um, you may know it, it's Madison, uh, and Mike is gonna share some of his experience on this project.
Thanks, Jennifer. And I just wanna take a couple of minutes to highlight this project because, uh, it was one I led for the city, the complete rewrite of their zoning code several years ago. And their their objectives were very much like yours. How do we preserve and, um, maintain our existing historic neighborhoods and and traditional neighborhood, uh, districts? And, uh, if you know Madison, the Isthmus is, and the near Isthmus are where a lot of those established neighborhoods and historic districts are located. You look on the, um, handout, I mean, not the handout, but the screen, the red dot is the Capitol Square and brown is the university and then in yellow are some of those historic, uh, neighborhoods that what Madison was concerned about was if something were to change or there's a new, uh, investment or a fire, whatever it could be, the code at that time wouldn't allow the city to rebuild those neighborhoods like they were established, you know, and again, there's a historic character to that. So our focus was creating a series of character areas and we used that to help define specific, uh, definitive, physical characteristics of these, of these, uh, character areas, these neighborhoods, and then use that as a basis for creating the code. We, you hear the old adage of any broke, don't fix it, and it's exactly what we did with Madison. We tried to be pragmatic and economical about using their Euclidean-based code where we needed to on the outskirts and the developments where sixty, seventies, eighties were built. That didn't change at all. We changed the name of the districts and we didn't change the standards, but on the, on the Isthmus, we made a concerted effort to do that and we actually stratified four different district, traditional districts, based on how consistent they were and and physically, uh, sympathetic they were to each other. So you see a TRC three, which is traditional, uh, residential, C three allows a three thousand square foot lot, thirty foot width, and setbacks in the fifteen to twenty foot range and if it's alley loaded, it's gotta continue to be alley loaded. So we think there's some, very much some similarities there with, uh, what you're doing here and so let's, let's talk a little bit about Brainerd because from your objectives, you talked about shifting the focus from use to physical, uh, form or character, an intuitive, highly, um, graphically based, user-friendly code, preserving the unique and and and, uh, character of Brainerd's commercial districts and neighborhoods and emphasizing infill and mixed use. And the rest of that objective was that promotes a mix of housing types with an emphasis on on improving residents' ability to find goods and services within close proximity to where they live. That was in your RFP. To me, that means walkable and if you look at the upper right-hand, uh, image there, that's one of the, part of the commercial corridor on highway, um, on Washington. In fact, we were just over there at Jimmy John's before we came over here. And obviously that's a very, uh, auto-oriented development pattern. I mean, it's just the way the code's written. But the great thing, what you're blessed with is incredible, uh, connected street block pattern that provides the option to safely, conveniently ride your bike, walk, drive your motorized chair, whatever it is to any of that commercial out on the corner. So that's a great thing. You've got a, uh, an asset to work on. And obviously you've got some historic residential neighborhood patterns and I'm gonna just focus on Gregory Park for a minute because there are some non-conforming issues, uh, non-conforming u- units in there. Uh, but they're also have a historic character, so let's talk a little bit about that. Um, and if you look at your handouts, not on the, um, the overhead here, but in the handout, I just snipped out a piece of Gregory Park from their original plaid of eighteen hundreds. And there's a couple of things to learn from that, e- even as we get into thinking about whether it's form-based or use-based, I mean, you've heard a lot about form-based. Every code delivers a form, okay? Your code today, it's a Euclidean-based, basic code. It will, at the end of the day, deliver a a form, a built en- environment. That's what's so exciting about codes, you know, it's like it creates things that are, get built. But, um, in some cases, the form characteristics aren't always highlighted or brought forward or emphasized. So there's a couple of clues that we can think about, just looking at the the confines of Gregory Park area. It was platted in twenty-five foot increments. That was very common at that time of the, uh, uh, in history where you would plat highly desirable places around common, uh, green space or parks or a commercial area you'd see platted in twenty-five foot increments. 25-foot increments. And what got developed in anticipation of the market was 25 feet here or 50 feet there. Whatever the market needed, it would gather that increment. That's why you see real skinny downtown storefronts next to larger ones. That was development by accretion, and it was intended to accommodate incremental development and investment. So, there's one thing there that says, okay, and there are some 25-foot lots around these blocks around Gregory Park. There are, and I, I measured some of them. So, the notion that that in itself doesn't preclude a 25-foot lot next to a 50, next to 100, they can be symbiotic, and if you go over there today, you can see it's a fairly consistent environment. The second clue we get out of this whole plating pattern is the fact that the 25-foot increments were platted in what I call end grain. So, that means that the fronts of all these lots are facing the park. That was by intentions, you had the best of your development, the best of your, your front door, your yard, your stoop, your porch, your balcony, the church, the big front doors of the churches open up onto the park, except for the Methodist, when they rebuilt, they kind of twisted it a little bit. Not that I have anything against Methodist, just the church. So, but the idea, there's two very clear physical clues that we can take to think about, okay, we've got a Euclidean-based zoning, but here's some physical things we can work with too, that can apply in other parts of your community. And then lastly, how do we do this? We think about the, the, the forms and the physical attributes that can best communicate that. In the Botno TOD zoning code updates we did in the Twin Cities, Jennifer and I worked on together, we looked at facade types. With the Ford site redevelopment that I worked on for site design standards, we looked at frontage types. We can also look at building types, and you can see sort of an example of all that. Building types are a little more involved, but the actual zoning of the Ford site in St. Paul is based on building type, so there's different ways to look at how you can approach all that. But again, the idea here is to be, to use the best we have from your code, and if we need to amplify with a few major kinds of physical standards, we can do that. Lastly, a graphic intuitive-based code. If you'll look in the upper right-hand corner here, it's what I call the two-page spread about, this was for Botno LRT quarter, and Jennifer's got some examples of this too, if you want to take a look at it closer. But basically, about 90% on those two pages of what you need to know to develop a lot is there. Height, setback, glazing, frontage, where parking goes. If you look at height, you can see graphically quickly that four stories are allowed here or six are allowed there with a setback. Even a chart of permitted uses are included in that. So, that doesn't bypass the permitting process, but it just provides the person who needs it a snapshot, if you will, of everything that's needed to be done. That's something that we would approach in terms of your code as well. So, with that, I'll stop.
Very good.
So, just building on what Mike is talking about, I view a lot of these tools or these pieces as your implementation strategies. So, the code itself is one implementation strategy, right? You, you develop it, you create something that you as, as a body, and the city council, as a policymaking board, and the staff can use to actually review land use applications or, or talk to, you know, property owners about what they can and can't do with their properties, et cetera. So, that's one piece of implementation. The other piece is how do you synthesize the information in a digestible way, so that when someone comes into your community, a developer, a commercial entity, or, or somebody looking to do a new apartment project, et cetera, how do they come in and how do you deliver information to them that makes it easy for them to understand what they need to do? And so, Mike calls this a two-page spread, and we kind of went back and forth on this. I call this a cheat sheet, or crib, crib notes, or I, I was trying to remember what we used to call them, when you read the yellow book and you didn't have to read the whole book.
Cliff notes.
Cliff notes. Yes. That's what this is, right? So, the idea is you create a set of cliff notes for each of your zoning districts. So, that when someone comes in and they say, what am I zoned? And we only have five copies of that, so you might have to share. My apologies. I don't know if you'd all want to see it.
Keep going, get a video show.
So, the idea is you create this cheat sheet, right? You create the cliff notes that help folks understand what the rules are in a really easy-to-understand format, so that they don't have to read 30 pages of code to understand it. And so, the, the idea of this is we start creating these tools as we're working through the code, right? So, we're running concurrently with each other, so that at the end of this, you not only end up with the full code, but you also end up with the cliff notes that go along with it, that you can use to help deliver the branding, the messaging of how folks can develop or do something with their property here. So, the other piece of implementation, we've got two other examples, and they're not the only examples, there's just things that we think could be beneficial here, is making sure that we have strong mapping and making sure that the graphics that we provide have city-specific context to them. So, part of this is looking at maybe a couple sample parcels within your, within your city that, as we go through this process, Mike starts to draw up in concept plan and blob up. So, I know it's a very technical term, blob up, but you know what I'm talking, the massing diagrams, that they're not an architectural design, but it really starts to talk about what do those setbacks look like? How might the site develop? What does it look like with adjacent pieces? Those, those graphics and those pieces then become the information you can share with others who might come into your city and look at a parcel. So, it's another way to communicate. And finally, the, the video short story that we are proposing. So, when I say short, I actually mean really short. So, we're talking about a minute and a half-ish, two minutes maybe, of us, of something that is a compelling story of what this process is and how it can be used from an economic development perspective, and how you can use it to help hopefully leverage investment and leverage redevelopment and infill in particular areas in your community. The idea would be to take snippets and collect information as we go through this process and assemble it at the end into a story. And that's why we brought Todd into the mix, because I don't know how to do that, but Todd does. And so, to give you a sense of his type of work, we did bring a video along with us tonight to demonstrate how he tells the story. I want to give a big, huge caveat, because he made me do this, that this was made for Target. We don't have the same budget as you might imagine. And so, what it's meant to show is he's a really good storyteller, and we can use that knowledge and that expertise to tell a really great story about this.
So-
So, with that-
Yeah, right.
He's the video guy. So, this, for those of you, I don't know if you're familiar with the Faribault Woolen Mills, they have had, they've been in existence since the 1800s. I'm just going to keep talking while he start. So, the Faribault Woolen Mills are the historic mill down on the river. My dad worked there, I worked there. So, it's kind of a really cool, cool place, but they started a collaboration with Target, and this is the video that he created. If we don't have audio, the storytelling part might not be great. We don't have audio. No, okay. So, I feel like maybe I should narrate it. I can't though.
Those are football players.
Those are football player, they're into the football. This is their downtown. This is the historic Faribault. They're on the river, because they were a woolen mill. Oh, look, they're going to start working for the day. I'm trying. I, it's much better than this, I promise. Anyway, I encourage you all to, actually, we've got the link to take a look at it, because the narration is the part where it tells the story, obviously, about the old looms and how they brought them back to life to create these blankets. And so, from that perspective, the idea is to take those types of pieces of information, take video, which probably won't look like this, because I don't think we're making blankets when we go through this process, but to take those snips, put them together, and make it into something that you could put on your website. It's something that the kids, as my husband likes to say, look at on YouTube, and, and be something that talks about, about the city and its efforts as we go through this process. So, this would be a much bigger crescendo had there been audio, but that's okay. So, I would encourage you to take a look at, at the link. And, and with that, we're over on our 10 minutes. However-
Very good. Thank you. We're going to start with a couple of questions from David.
Jennifer, Mike, I just have two questions. I'm asking all the consultants this evening. And just before I, I ask those questions, the commission, I'll be providing the commission all your presentations after tonight, and so, we'll have the link and they can watch the video, so they'll be able to actually hear it. So, the first question I have for you is, from the, from your understanding of the project, what do you believe will be the most challenging task?
Well, obviously, when you do a zoning code, it's not like even the, it's not even like the process you go through with updating a comprehensive plan or going through some of those kinds of more visionary kinds of things. But, so, one of the, one of the things, it's not a planning project, so it's, it's going to be a challenge to get people to understand, unless it's like you've got landowners in the room. I've been through projects where we actually met with attorneys, just so they would understand what we're trying to talk about in terms of changing, changing the law. So, so getting some general understanding of that, and then, and also, I guess this will be an advisory body to the council, so having that connection to the council and elected officials making the decision, you're all on the same page. I mean, that's a real critical thing. In most cases, a lot of the technical issues can be addressed. And one of the things we had in our proposal was looking at potential test case sites where we could test the code that helps people understand, kind of put some meat on the flesh and bones and, but, you know, having people understand, we, when we went through the TOD code from Botno forward to the Twin Cities, I don't think we got all that, every one of those cities passed the code. I don't think we got really any major pushback, because we did a lot of legwork ahead of time, so, beyond the public process that we might help you with, there may be other bits and pieces that you've got to focus on as well, so.
So, I would, I would agree with Mike, but I would add to it that I think one of the most challenging pieces of the process or the project is that we're, we're in kind of uncertain times with respect to how the pandemic is affecting people and affecting development and developers and their needs and what they're looking at. And so, when we're thinking about the code and the dimensional standards and the regulations and, and those pieces, they have a direct relationship to the market. And so, getting a better understanding of what that actually means, I, I think is a real challenge as we move forward. It's not that it's insurmountable, but I, I think there's a challenge. We know, for example, that retail, the demand for retail has changed dramatically from what, what it was even two or three years ago. And so, what does that mean in terms of the mix of uses that's permitted in a particular district, whether or not mixed use, for example, where you've got some type of retailer on the main floor and residential on floors two and three? How do you finance that? What's the demand for that? So, it's not to say that your code still can't permit those things or that we don't consider those things, but you really have to have that market lens that goes along with it, and I think that's a real challenge as we navigate the next moments.
The second question I have is more specific to your proposal. In your proposal, you list a, a fee of $90,000. I just want to confirm, is that a not to exceed or a base fee? And then on second to that, what issues do you generally encounter that cause change orders which result in increased fees?
So, the $90,000 is the not to exceed value. I believe, I believe it said that right next to it. I'm just, I think we wrote that. So, the, the estimate, I believe, was somewhere around $87,000. We added about $2,500, $2,200, plus or minus, just a little cushion. To be perfectly honest, I haven't had, I think I can think of one change order on a project in our last three years. So, when we actually put a, a project scope and budget together, we do it based on a pretty specific allocation of hours and estimates, so I'm pretty confident in our number. About the only thing that I can see is if, if there were additional public meetings that were requested, for example, beyond what we had scoped out. Obviously, because there's that commute or travel time from the Twin Cities to here, if we added significant number of public meetings on top of what we provided and that could occur, but I, I don't really see that happening. The, the other piece of that is with the pandemic and COVID, things keep shifting around, and it seems like you can buy time in other places, and, you know, something goes virtual and then you get a, it's like you barter and trade for an open house later. So, I don't know.
I would just add, though, we've got 12 technical advisory group meetings. That was something we proposed, was working with a technical advisory group, because that really can cover a lot of stakeholder ground in the community, and 11 P, uh, planning commissioner and city council meetings. So, that's a pretty robust meeting schedule, so.
That's why I don't, I don't see it happening. I just, if you decided you really liked us and wanted to see us even more than what we scoped.
Very good.
I'll use Mr. Chair.
All right. With that, we'll open questions to the commission.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please, Mike.
You've got the, to the point of some of those meetings, Mike, what, what do you imagine is the character of the planning commission meetings? I think there is nine of them that I saw in the various phases. Are those information items? Are they work sessions helping, helping us to think about what the, how we plan our time as we go forward on your proposal?
Well, that's a good question, and, and let me jump on that, because obviously, we, we talked about setting aside this technical advisory group that would be separate from, from this body, mainly to provide another lens or, or viewpoint as far as code changes go. I could see the planning commission, obviously, you're in the central role here of pushing this thing forward and, and making these changes. So, I could see there's informational meetings that would happen, but I, I could also see a series of work sessions as well, and I don't know, I, I didn't look at what your monthly schedule is and if, whether you're amenable to adding a work session during a month or so. Sometimes that, that helps, or then we may have to do that, but I think it's a little of both. I mean, it's, it's, because you, you want to, you want to make some strong recommendation to the elected body, I, I would assume.
So, I, I would agree with his statement, but one, one addition I would make is that the way we structured it in the proposal is that those, those meetings can be either in-person or virtual, so I would imagine that those which are more virtual would be more information providing, and those where we really need to get into the, into the weeds, for lack of a better word, seeing it really get into content, those would be the, the ones that we would have in-person and try to have that discussion. So, it would be a combination in terms of the planning commission. The technical advisory group would be the same. There may be times where it's, we're just letting them know, we've structured something, here's what we're thinking, here's the direction, here's, you know, a brief annotated outline about a, you know, a specific section, presenting that to them, get a little bit of feedback. So, the, the meetings themselves, it's not saying every meeting's going to be three hours or, or something of that nature. There might be some times where it's a 30-minute check-in, and that's all we need to do. And that's either with the planning commission or the technical advisory group. And then there might be some that are more robust. Actually, there, there will be, there will be some that will be more robust.
Thank you. Other questions? Jan?
Nothing. I'm surprised.
All right.
No, I just think it's fantastic. It's a lot of stuff to take in tonight.
Okay. I got a couple of quick questions. Mike, I think you were mentioning, if you use the phrase, code builds, builds a developed form, and, and I, I like that logical notion that you have a code that builds a certain kind of developed form. One of the things that we've run into around here is that we, over the years, holes get poked into it over and over and over again. Variances are granted, things happen. How do you, how do you cope with that? Because that's one of the things we struggle with, and we've had this form that, I don't think it started with 14 districts or whatever we have now. We ended up laying so many districts and so many things that we're just kind of, you know, theory only goes so far.
Right. And has any of that happened on Laurel in your Main Street? Where you had to have a variance or a conditional use process or permit?
I can't think of one on Laurel. I think Laurel, I don't think more quarters coming into town, yes.
Yeah, sure. And, and, and that's, I think, kind of gets back to some of the comments Jennifer was making about the marketplace because it is a very dynamic thing. It wants to do what it wants to do, right? But at the same time, the whole is greater than the parts and pieces, the way we approach it. I mean, I always think of cities and communities as parts and pieces. How do you assemble them? The code mandates and directs how you assemble your parts and pieces. So downtown is a very well-formed, very physically defined environment. I mean, you, there's no, there's no question about that. But once you get out into other, these other areas that are providing a little more flexibility, you get, you, you see the market want to push things in one direction or the other. So the, and some of that's cultural. I mean, it's just, you know, you, things have been done here for such a long time or any community. And, you know, they, and the other thing about that is, and we, getting, getting back to elected officials and advisory boards, is if you have, if you're, you have a common vision about what you, how you want to see your community built and developed, then you've got to trust your code a little bit and put a little more faith and maybe a little more teeth into the code and go, you know, if it's facing this public space, we're not going to allow driveway curb cuts. I mean, there's no variance for that. You know, it's just, yes, there's hardships and those kinds of things happening. You have terrain and topography here. But if the advisory board and the elected official are on the same page and go, we want to make our code a little stronger, it's going to protect investment and protect the, the value we have in our community, then that's, you know, you had to approach it from that perspective. That's sort of a subjective answer, I guess, a little bit. But, you know, I think all communities struggle with those things.
You, you touched on the complexities that you look at. The question I've asked everybody tonight is, what is the biggest resistance you've seen to form-based code? What scares people the most?
I think there's, there's a couple of things. One, again, I'll go back. Your code produces a form, okay? Don't, so your Euclidean zoning code is also form-based. There is form inherent in all those numbers and metrics and narrative. The, the thing that scares most people about form-based code is straight out right. And I know you got a proposal from Jeff Farrell, who's very, very specific about this is the form and this is the way it's going to be. I've worked with Jeff. And I, I think the thing that scares people is, is the unknown. It's like, well, what does this mean and how does it work for us? And if we can't demonstrate that along the lines of economic investment and marketplace response, then it's, it's not going to work. But I, I go back to thinking about the code from a pragmatic standpoint and from a, being economical about it. If the, if the use piece and Euclidean standards work, let's make them work the best they can. If they need some help, let's amplify them or add to them with some form-based requirement. If you think about Gregory Park, what defines that park? It's porches, stoops, balconies, you know, doors and windows, those kinds of things that you can easily tweak your code to respond to those kinds of built environments. Another part of your community is entirely different. You know, you can, you can tweak that. Not everything is going to be highly form-based. Your downtown is a great example. Very well, it's very easy to find that whole thing is form-based because it's so intact. And part of that is, I think the other, the other burden that the market bears is, well, you're just going to cost us more money. And I think we have to demonstrate that. In the long run, it doesn't. It provides more value. So hopefully that helped.
Good.
Is that your, I could come up with a question if, if I may, unless somebody else had it?
I, I think we're ready. Jan?
We've been, we've heard some people. So this is my question. How often do you think zoning codes should be changed? Or are they something that, is there a way where we wouldn't have to be looking at the variances and everything that Don had brought up? That, I guess that's my question. Is zoning, is it fluid? Is it a living? Is it, is it, you know?
Yeah. If you look at your code and the additions that have, that are there, you will see tweaks on your zoning code probably almost monthly sometimes. So things are all, and that's an indication of what's going on in the marketplace to a certain extent. But in general, as times change, the code changes too. As the marketplace is delivering one thing now, wants to deliver another thing, the code has to catch up with that, keep up with that. Form-based codes, not to, to stay, stay on the soapbox, but they're more about, this is the, this is the reality we want to see built. So here's a little bit easier way for people to understand it and deliver it. But your codes, your code is a, it is a fluid thing. It's going to change on a regular basis. Whether it's your building code, zoning code, there's, you've got a whole bunch of ordinances to change all the time. You know, we're in the social distancing era and maybe that's going to drive some code change. It certainly has driven behavioral changes already. But from a code standpoint, building, building codes, the way buildings are built is changing. So that's sometimes driving codes too. So it, it's, you can't just write it one time and it's going to be good forever. So if that answers your question.
It, I just, I thought maybe there's a miracle somewhere in there that would say, hey, this is kind of a perfect thing. You might have it for four years.
There, there is a miracle. It's just not in zoning codes, I don't think.
I mean, the other thing I would add to that is oftentimes you go through this big process with your comprehensive plan. You update it. You redefine what your vision is. You set out what you'd like to accomplish for the next 15 years. And, and many communities end up in a position that they don't then do the next step, which is updating the zoning code to implement and support the comprehensive plan. When you don't do that next step, you end up with changes constantly. Because now you've got inconsistency between your new vision and your code that you're trying to implement. So, so in terms of reducing the frequency of how often you're looking at code changes, and also I would argue how frequently you're looking at variance requests, for example. If you do that full, like, analysis and that update of, does the zoning actually support and match my comp plan, you'll reduce how frequently. It's not saying you won't do it, but it should reduce the frequency that you're doing it. But a minimum, every time you update your comp plan, you should be doing a pretty comprehensive look at your zoning ordinance at the same time to follow it. Because that's your key implementation tool.
Very good. Last chance of questions? There are none. I'm going to thank you guys for your presentation. Thank you for your time tonight. Great job. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And you do have the video with the sound, right? They've got all the.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll provide them that way.
That'll be your bedtime story you can watch.
With the hype of this, I'm, I'm going home to watch it.
But it's only 90 seconds or 60 seconds. So you don't even have to stay up late for it.
Thanks, Jan. Hope you soon.
Yeah, I saw that.
That's good.
Yeah. The spacing of the.
Yeah. All the setbacks.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That was actually the cookie. Everything else was, yeah, not yours.
Even though you, even though you're deeded on it, Mike.
Hello. Good evening.
Ladies, gentlemen, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. We're running a little long. I can't see that. We're really grateful for the opportunity to share with you our thoughts on how to help Raynard develop a new comprehensive, excuse me, a new zoning ordinance. And part of what I wanted to do today is just follow some advice that I, that I heard a few years ago. And great presentations are following three steps. Be good, be brief, and be done. So I'd like to help all of us do that. I'm going to focus on the things I think are most important and discuss. And then I'm just going to leave it open for you to question. And we'll see what we need to do to enable that. My name is Joel Quambeck and I represent KLG. Our proposal summarizes basically how we think we can provide a stratified, or excuse me, a focused stakeholder engagement approach and a stratified technical process that will create a user-friendly code. One that will help you build your vision for the future of Raynard. So most of my presentation is really focusing on those three main concepts. The focused stakeholder engagement, that stratified technical process, and then what does it take to give you a vision built for your future? So one of the things we need to recognize is that there are a lot of different stakeholders in the city of Raynard. And some of these stakeholders have very different objectives or interests than others do. And I've just highlighted some of those stakeholders here. Winning controversy is always nice. For homeowners or property owners, protecting their investment, maybe their biggest investment in their life, is critical. And lots of people would really like to see an easy, straightforward process that gives them predictable results when they come before you and the governing body. And then as the planning commission, you at least have two objectives, I'm sure. You want to make it so that you have clear choices when you're faced with decisions. And then you do want that comprehensive plan's vision to be fulfilled. Finally, we're interested in making sure that the constitutional requirements are being met as you make your decisions and as this code is developed. Your new comprehensive plan adopted last year has a great vision for the future. A lot of great ideas, covers a lot of territory. These things that I've listed here all have a direct bearing on how we develop your new zoning ordinance. Every single one of these aspects ought to be a part of the way you consider, you know, development of your ordinance and what it will result in. So because of that, I, I just want to back up for a second and talk about what zoning ordinances are for. Fundamentally to me, zoning ordinances are about balancing the community interests with the property owner interests. And that give and take is always at play. So every time you make a decision, that's part of what you're trying to do, is weigh those two competing or at least sometimes competing interests. These guiding principles are things that I've picked up from training that I've had and also from my experience over 30 years now, basically working in the public sector, helping them to make decisions. You have a responsibility to address certain kinds of problems. Those problems are some of the problems that relate to the public health, safety, and welfare. If you don't have a real problem to address, then I don't think you have business putting the, the guidance on that into your, into your ordinance. When you get to the point where you know that you have a problem to solve, and I think when we look back at the things that you're trying to accomplish in your comprehensive plan, there are a number of questions that we can be raising and saying there are problems, then we need to be responsible and figure out the best way to solve those problems. Our approach needs to be rational and reasonable. That means that not just those of us who spend a lot of time talking and planneries, but the everyday person on the street can recognize that the process was reasonable and the result is decent. And there are almost always people who are not as favorably served by decisions as others. It's our job to really care about everybody in our community. Reminded of the dedication played down, down at the entrance for, was it Bonnie Cunningham? And the la, the last line on that was something about trying to make sure that there was a better life for everybody, or at least for others. I think we need to keep that in mind, that what we're really trying to do is care about everybody and protect their interests and build a better quality of life for them. So when it comes to zoning, we can become rather stringent and overbearing, or we can adopt an approach that's more providing the minimum requirements that will solve the problem that we're facing. And we always have this need to, to address the constitutional protections that every citizen has a right to. These are the guiding principles that I think are useful for us to keep in mind as we go through the development process for your new zoning ordinance. We've envisioned a three-phased approach. Diagnostics, document development, and then helping you with implementation. And if you had a chance to read through our proposal, I think you'll recognize those parts of, of the approach in the details of the ordinance. We have a very sort of back and forth, almost pendulum approach to things throughout the, the process. Getting public input and then writing down what that means for you as you develop the plan, or excuse me, as you develop the ordinance. And again, back to the public or to special stakeholder groups, asking, well, what do we need? What's, what's necessary? How can we fulfill the vision for the future of Raynard? And then back to putting more detail into paper. So as we think about that, the end result from my perspective is that we want to see widespread community ownership. A successful ordinance will be one that has broad support within your community. And what this slide is showing you is a variety of activities that we think, and what we've highlighted in our, our proposal, will be helpful to, to have that community engagement happening. It's important to recognize there are two different kinds of engagement that we're really, or two kinds of strategies that we're working on. Number one is simply the marketing strategy. If people aren't aware of the fact that we're doing this planning process to develop a new ordinance, we're going to end up with much less ownership than we want. But once we do have them recognizing that this activity is going on, we need to engage them. And that means using a lot of different tools depending on the different stakeholders that are involved. We have a lot of different tools that we're very adept at, at least our commu, our communications team is very adept at. These are just some of them. You're probably familiar with some of them, most of them maybe even. Mural is one that was new to me until I started thinking about what we needed for public engagement. And it is simply an online comment board where you ask key questions of the people who you're trying to reach and asking them to basically identify what certain aspects of their, of their thinking on a particular topic that's important to the process is. You paste them all up there and you start to see not just the similarities, but also the differences. And if you're dealing with a diverse group, one of the things you're starting to understand is the themes that are important to those different stakeholder groups. Especially when we think about the community, I should stop here and talk back. Especially when we're thinking about the importance of identifying the, the unique characteristics of different parts of your city, I think that this approach will be helpful. Now, if we're able to do this in person, that's something we can do. But it also works for us to do it online. So our communications team, some people I'm very proud of. Brenda Thomas has a lot of great experience, I think practically 20 years in the area of public engagement. She has worked on statewide projects for Minnesota Department of Transportation, community-level projects. And she is a great communicator. But I would be nominating her for our role as the communications lead just because of the single interview I had with her when, when she first joined our, joined our KLG company. And it's simply because she's a good listener. She's a good listener and she thinks well on our feed. Bethany Brandt-Sargent is someone I had the chance to mentor in some of the activities of earlier projects we did together. She has grown tremendously. She is very adept at all the social media tools that we were showing you just the other slide. And besides that, she's a great transportation planner. So we'll be using her. And besides that, she's a great transportation planner, so we'll be using her for some aspects of transportation analysis as it might pertain to the ordinance. And then finally, Nikki is just somebody who's been around a lot. She's attended not as many meetings as I have, but an awful lot of meetings in her role. And I'm going to use her as an efficient researcher and support for me in public hearings and public engagement activities. So, what is that structured approach that we mentioned? I called it stratified approach, and I'll explain that in just a minute. But it's really starting with the biggest, most important question, and then figuring out the answer to that and moving on to the next step. So, the first phase, that diagnostic phase, has some parts of this, and it's followed by some more parts of this process, and we end up with a full draft document. Let me talk just a little bit about these first ones. I think that defining neighborhoods is a very fundamental step because it helps us to understand what kinds of things make them unique. It helps us to understand, therefore, what kinds of things we want to probably protect and make them a part of a single district. And if we're looking at the form-based elements, it's really focusing on the idea of what are the characteristics that are going to be important to maintain and build on for a form-based code, or even a form-based code. But there's a step that's part of form-based codes and regular Euclidean zoning that's also important to understand. And that is simply, we need to take your comprehensive plan with all those great ideas and make sure that we understand them more thoroughly. If you don't do that, we can end up with mush. We also need to evaluate your existing ordinance, finding out its strengths and weaknesses, the things that make sense to still be a part of the new ordinance. And the result of our analysis for all those things and lots of public engagement is putting together an outline for what this new ordinance needs to look like, and specific things that we want it to be able to accomplish. From there, we move on to developing the draft document, looking at districts, form-based areas, land uses performance standards, putting together the regulating plan, form standards, and then managing the elements that go with the ordinance. Let's talk about this just a little bit more specifically. I said earlier I'd explained why I use the word stratified. It's because we look at this basically as a series of layers. The foundational layer is understanding what your district boundaries ought to be, what your form-based areas ought to be. And I understand that you're working through the process and developing a future land use map right now. And we're glad that we're having an opportunity to get involved in this process at this stage. Might be that we'll be throwing a few questions your way that will help to refine or make sure that the thinking on those different areas of your city address some of the things that we think are important to address for, especially for form-based codes, but also for some of the other things that we think are out there now. Was it one of your objectives to try to reduce the number of zoning districts? I'm dealing with that for two other clients, excuse me, two other clients right now. And in one case, we're kind of scratching our heads and going, yeah, but? And in the other case, we're going, yes, this really makes sense. We don't need all of that stuff. But I can't wait to see what happens in your situation because many times those districts are almost legacy things. They're not really important except for one single thing that they served. Maybe we can find ways to overcome that. At the next layer, beyond the foundational layer of districts, we really have to start thinking about, well, for those uses, what kind of standards? For those form-based areas, what kind of standards are going to be the most important things? But it's also really important, especially to think about transitional things that need to be understood. So, for example, nonconformities. If we end up with this many zoning districts, and they have this kind of uses that are allowed in them, or these kind of standards that apply, are we creating opportunities for more nonconformities, or are we lessening them? Maybe since so much development happened before you actually even had zoning ordinance, we could find ways to reduce or eliminate those nonconformities about how we design our zoning districts. And then we move on to the more general things, definitions, roles and responsibilities, and processes, ultimately, implementation. So, let's take a moment and talk more about form-based codes. The thing that I would like to highlight here is how important it is to understand why you want form-based codes. We're not making a foregone conclusion that form-based is the only way to reach some of those objectives. In fact, the reason why we proposed on this is because even though we read your RFP with the sense that, well, you're really interested in form-based codes, we started to recognize that there are probably things that would better make a hybrid code the best-suited approach. So, we're involving Euclidean and form-based elements into the same ordinance. The pictures that you see on the screen here are, first of all, in the upper left, a zoning map for the city of Lacey, Washington. And then underneath that, a blown-up area for that district, the Woodlawn District, within that zoning ordinance, in that zoning map, that they chose to make for form-based. And then the next three maps are actually what comprise their regulating plan for how they anticipate, what their most important characteristics are that they want to make sure they address through form-based processes. Listed to the lower right is basically those kinds of standards that they put in place. So, those kinds of things are typical in a form-based code, but it doesn't mean that those are the things that are most important to you, or should be most important to you. And so, a lot of the questions that we want to ask early on in the process that'll get us to the end result in our diagnostic process are understanding characteristics, what things really matter to the people of Brainerd, and how can we make sure that they're protected? Do you really have a strong form-based focus? So, in your comprehensive plan, you had two specific areas that you thought of as being prime for form-based, and that's probably the case. We're not trying to suggest they are, but we also think there might be some other areas where you'll say, yeah, you know, we could do this that would be sort of form-based and like get us further down the road through Woodlawn after. I'm showing you three pictures here because I just want to highlight a couple things. In the public areas of your city, not the residential areas, but especially the commercial areas, you're going to be dealing with cases where it's all built. And what FormBase likes to do is really focus on building outdoor rooms that make you feel comfortable and that make you want to be there. And in the case of the commercial areas, you want them to be places where people want to stay, where they want to be inquisitive about what's going on in the building, and much of the design that goes into that is to accomplish those kinds of objectives. But when you have an existing sidewalk and set of buildings, you sometimes have some limitations. So, the picture on the left, number one, is really showing you the scenario where you have an existing sidewalk to work in. Number two is showing you basically a retrofit where there used to be development, but they started from scratch to redevelop it. You can see the wider sidewalk that's there. And number three just shows you what you can start to do with the sidewalk, to make it be a place where people can go, where people can still walk, and where you have some attractive activity going on. In the residential area though, we're still interested in having outdoor rooms, places where people feel safe, places where people are interested in being. But now, there's additional role, and that's basically the eyes-on-the-street idea. Part of what safety comes from is thinking that other people are seeing where I am and I'm therefore needing to be to watch myself, or I can be more secure because I know other people are kind of looking out for me. What you see in the upper tier, one, two, three, four, is a residential street in Fargo that has some nice elements to it, and a couple things that are not so nice. I think they might happen some places in Brainerd as well. A street that is too wide, at least if you think about it from a traditional neighborhood design standpoint, because people are going to drive down that street and look at all that space, it's almost like being on the interstate, I can go as fast as I want. In traditional neighborhood development, you want in earlier streets, you want to make sure that you have people that are being more careful about what's going on in the neighborhood. But what I really wanted to highlight is what you see in slide or in picture number four up there. The question I have for you is, does that house feel like or look like it fits into the neighborhood? You see a mixture of architectural styles. This is all taken around one intersection, so what you're seeing is all part of the same neighborhood. Well, when I looked at it, I said, yeah, it does. I think it fits pretty well. It was built two years ago. Now, look at the bottom five, six, seven, and eight, especially look at number five. I was the president of the Hawthorne Neighborhood Association for about three years, and during that time, we developed the first Fargo Historic Overlay District to try to protect the existing characteristics of that historic neighborhood. This building is not what I had envisioned would result from that particular overlay zone, but it's in the middle of that particular part, that particular neighborhood. If you look at the second slide, you can see the backside of the house, the number six. It's actually a triplex, and it's rather tall. You can see a two-story building next to it that's not as tall, but still it gives it some sense of being at the same scale. But look at number seven. That tan house is just on the north side of the building, and it's along a major street. So, what you're seeing is a pretty big difference in scale. The dominant scale though is actually what we see in number eight. A lot of centuries-old, two-story houses that have faux attics that are quite a bit of, that have some pretty nice architectural care. The question that I want to ask you is, how comfortable are you with that building shown in picture number five? Is that a good fit for your neighborhood? Is it a good fit because it's close enough to the same scale? Is it a good fit because the architectural style is good enough? Or do you have neighborhoods where that would be looked at as a major crime? If we had more time, I'd tell you a story about what happened on my street, just a couple houses down, or around it this summer, but we've got to move on. Technical teams that we're bringing to your project. Both Forrest and I have over 30 years of experience working in planning and zoning, developing ordinances for cities, counties, townships, and administering those regulations. All four of us that you see up here have experience administering regulations. So, when we think about writing codes, we don't just look at it from a standpoint of what's theoretically impossible. We look at it from what's practical and basically easy to do. What provides the planning commission with good decisions? We also brought a visualization team to your attention. These are the guys that are going to provide the kinds of pictures that make, but could be just words, much easier to understand. We provided just a couple of examples. I didn't actually provide you with any axon drawings. Part of my background is in architecture, and so when you start talking about the things that relate to architecture and building concepts, I'm at least comfortable with them. So, at the end of the day, we really think it's important that we keep in mind what are the real problems that you need solved in your community to build the vision for the future. Our approach provides focused stakeholder engagement, stratified technical approach to help you build a user-friendly code that will help you create the vision for the future that you have. That in mind, I just want to say that we have a company of over 500 specialists that work in different areas, as you see listed here, to be a backup for us in any specific area that we might end up encountering. That's the first question.
Turn to Mr. Chansky, our building director has a couple of questions.
So, Joel, I've got two questions I've been asking all the consultants, and then I'll ask, I'll pass it over to the rest of the commission if they have any questions. The first question we have is, from your understanding of the project, what do you believe will be the most challenging task?
Okay, now, I gotta take the class off. Can't think as much. The most challenging aspect to me of this project is really getting good input from the people that need to have a say about what you're trying to accomplish. Now, my understanding is that you had great input during the development of the comprehensive plan, and that seems like, number one, a great place for us to use as a starting point. There are groups of people or past respondents that we can say, hey, you know, in order to make sure that vision gets carried out, we'd really like your input in this process too. We have a lot of different techniques that we would like to suggest that we can use to help create that interest in being a participant. But key to the way we think about things is a stakeholder advisory committee, and we think about them as being a way for us to let the different stakeholder groups have a representative on this committee so that instead of having to meet so much with whatever 20 different groups of stakeholders, some of that work can be done by the representatives on that same committee.
Second question is regarding, directly regarding your proposal. And you and I, like I have had with pretty much all the other consultants, have had a number of conversations the last few weeks, kind of helping you understand the city and where we're at, and so you know this question's coming. And that is, obviously, in your proposal, you didn't provide a lump sum, and you and I have discussed this, and so I'm kind of throwing this out there to let the commission know kind of why and kind of what your thoughts are exactly how the fee and stuff structure would work for this project.
I'm glad you asked that question, and I'm happy to answer. First of all, we basically didn't interpret the way the RFP was written to ask for a not-to-exceed report. So, we could have done so. I have to contest to you, and David already knows, that we didn't, because of that, actually sit down and sharpen our pencils to figure out exactly what the cost would be. But part of the reason for that is because there are so many questions that are sort of unanswered. Your comprehensive plan has a really visionary approach to it, but there are some specific details that we really need to hone in on so that we're comfortable that when we write the ordinance and the standards that belong in that ordinance, they actually help those vision elements be what people thought they were going to be. So, that, what I'm talking about is public engagement. I think we still need more public engagement to expand on, clarify some of the thinking about what the vision is for the future of Brainerd. And in our experience, the public engagement activities just sometimes become overwhelming. There are recent projects that we've done that are larger than yours is, where it's taken a third of our budget. And although I don't know that that's what it's going to take in your case, I did ask our communications lead to sit down and sharpen her pencil and figure out the basics that she thinks will be involved in the process. And then Forrest and I sat down and talked about what we think your plan would take if it was, excuse me, your ordinance would take if it was a pure zoning ordinance in a Euclidean model. And then we said, well, okay, what else would we need to do? How much extra would it take for us to get to the point where we would have something that incorporates form-based ordinance as well? And so, the way I'm comfortable answering the question about that number now is to say that we think we would be someplace between the top two quotes that you received. So, less than, I think 165 is the top, maybe closer to 104, someplace in that range. And we will be happy to sit down with staff and make more assumptions to be able to clarify and give an exact number to the city council. Is it council or commission? I'm sorry for that.
So, the planning commission will make, the planning commission here.
They'll make a recommendation.
Recommendation, council, yeah.
So, again, it's depending on whether or not you want to see a number before the planning commission passes on a recommendation or not. But I am of But I am available to help do that. It's just that we want to make, we want to clarify some assumptions because what we don't want to do is get halfway through the process and then find out that, well, you know, we really need to do this too. And then we kind of stall out while we go through the process getting a contract amendment to increase it. Or we could basically say, well, let's just shoot high so we know we're covered. But then you get a number that's probably not realistic and that you don't even really want a budget for. So those are some of the reasons we were thinking that way. Ultimately, we can do it. We'll just take our best guess.
Mr. Chair.
All right, I'll open the questions up to the commission members. Mr. Chair.
Start with Kevin.
Thank you. I noticed in your project schedule, you're proposing roughly around a 22-month timeframe for this. Is that a typical process that, in your experience with these types of projects, is that typical? Is that somewhat malleable? Maybe give me this, maybe share with us just what you, what you think that that will look like.
Thank you for that question.
Yeah.
It's longer than typical. Right now, I'm working on two ordinances. One of them, we proposed over a two-year timeframe, simply because that's the way the budget needed to be. The other one, we did for an 18-month timeframe. And that was because we anticipated, similar to this situation, quite a bit of public engagement. And we recognized that the people that were involved, some of the key stakeholders were farmers. And that when it comes to farming, you know, just hold your horses, give them a chance to get the work that has to get done and then be a delivery back to us. So, you know, if we were in an ideal situation where COVID wasn't a factor, where people have been busy lives and can't always make meetings in a timely manner, we could probably do it in 14 months. But the reality is that you all are busy lives, you have busy lives. And we probably need to space things out a little bit just to make sure that you can get other things done too.
Thank you.
Mike.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Joel, I appreciate your comments regarding the question about the budget that helped fill in some of the gaps of, as I read your proposal. You know, you're acknowledging that we've got a wealth of information from the public that we receive through the comp planning process. So I think that's an important piece that you identified. As I was reading through it, it seems to me like the public process, you're wanting to almost problem solve collectively with staff or with, with Reinhardt here to figure out what's the right approach. And you particularly referenced COVID-19 and so you've, you've been operating in this public input arena now for several months, I'm presuming. Have you got some ideas since you've submitted this on how we might approach that, what that might look like now that wasn't identified in your proposal?
Let's first start with the premise about the breadth of public input that we're seeking. Number one, I think the planning commission has already taken some shots at what comprised your neighborhoods in your, in your community. And for each neighborhood, whether it's exactly what we've already talked about or not, we feel it's important to get some local input, some neighborhood on the input. And how we do that is probably one of the biggest questions. If I had my brothers in the non-COVID world, I'd be talking to individuals. I'd be saying, you know, David, let's get some coffee and cookies and find a big backyard where we can just invite people or put some big whiteboards up and have people talk with us. If that's not possible, I highlighted the mural approach. For those people who are adept or at least comfortable with doing online responses, this is going to be very fat out, partly because it can be done on their timetable instead of ours. That's the biggest takeaway I've had for the last few months. Where we've gone and had the ability to do online, we can get them to respond, not necessarily when we would be, but in a timely manner. The downside is, what about the people like my mom, who until COVID came along, was not willing to have email or internet access? And there are other people who, for whatever reason, are in that same position. How do we reach out to them? Well, maybe we can accomplish that through that stakeholder committee that I was referring to. If we can get a couple of representatives from that group on the, from those people who are not very capable or willing to be involved through the internet, maybe we can find some ways to get them involved. Those are a couple of quick things.
Thank you.
Other questions? Yeah?
No, thank you.
All right. I've asked the same question for everyone tonight. What do you think scares people the most about form-based codes? What do you think is, what throws people the most about going to a form-based, moving to a budget-based approach? What do you think?
Well, in one word, uncertainty. It's not because it produces an uncertain result, because far from it, it can give you a more certain result. It's because they're not used to working with it. In my experience, working especially with developers, one of the key issues is they want to be able to know how things are going to work so that when they start investing their money, they know that they'll be able to get it back out. And that means basically knowing that if they do the right stuff, provide, you know, buildings or sites that meet the standards that are laid out in our ordinance, then they've got a yes. So one of the cool things is the opportunity to put more things in black and white so that people can say, okay, I can do this. And actually some of the uncertainty that might come from things like public hearings for conditional use permits can go away. Good answer. Thank you.
All right, final chance of questions. Very none. I'm going to thank you for your presentation today. Good job. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
I enjoyed it. I appreciate the opportunity to be here.
All right. On mail, a motion to adjourn. I, it's tempting to go into discussion tonight. I think it'd probably be better for discussion at the next meeting. I think it's probably.
And then Mr. Chair, before we adjourn, I just want to throw it out there, if, if any of the commissioners have other questions that come into your mind over the next few days that you're pondering, the presentations and the proposals, please send them my way and I will pass them on to the consultants so we can have those answers by next Wednesday when you deliberate and hopefully make a decision. And then also I will be providing you, maybe not tonight, but first thing in the morning, all, all the presentations from this evening. So you'll also have those to refer to as well.
Great, thank you. All right, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
My number two move.
All right, do you have a second to go real quick?
Second.
All right, on paper, say aye.
All right.